Turn it over to Dan because he looks like the guy.
Well, thank you very much. First, I want to welcome everybody to our snowy meeting today. It's great to have everybody here. And to start with, what I want to do a couple of things. I want to welcome Judy Trang, who was just appointed to a new three-year term on the Budget Committee by the Board of Commissioners.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for your confidence. I appreciate the appointment from the county commissioners. It'll be fun working with you over the next three years.
Great. Well, we're so pleased. And so I wanted to start with Judy's appointment and, of course, our Treasurer-elect Bill Coon.
Mm-hmm. Thanks for joining us. The numbers guy.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity and really an opportunity to get a good jumpstart into this new role in the coming years. So anyway, a great opportunity to get up to speed, I remember. So thank you.
Thank you. Certainly, our new Chief Financial Officer, Robert Tintle.
Yep. Thank you. Good to be here this year as well.
Yes. And he was Treasurer also in Lane County prior to joining us. So we're so pleased to have you here. And Cam Sparks on the end, who's also joined us. So we have new faces at the table and a reappointment. So it's really a great, a great place to start our mid-year Budget Committee meeting. I think it's a really important meeting. It's great for us to have it. I understand we've only had this for a couple of years. I've been in the position for less than a couple of years. But I think it's a great opportunity for us to check in. Kind of where are we? And certainly with a lot of new faces, so we can get to know each other. And it's a great kicking, starting point for our next year, our fiscal year 24 budget process. We are going to cover a lot of territory today. And thanks so much to Dan for really preparing the presentation, which we've all reviewed a number of times, provided comments on several times. So thank you very much, Dan, for all the work you've done to prepare us to get to this point. Dan will cover this in a slide in just a couple of moments, but I'm going to go ahead and hit it as well. You know, today's a high-level conversation to focus on countywide financial perspective and budget assumptions. So that's going to be certainly a topic for us to discuss today as we check in on our current fiscal year budget. What are we beginning to think about for the next fiscal year? Certainly, it starts in just over six months, and we begin all that work really today and going forward as we prepare that. So I wanted to just touch on that. Certainly, a lot continues to change for us. We talked about some of the changes at our Budget Committee hearings last year from a lot of the infrastructure, the capital projects that we have that we need to initiate, that are all moving forward. We'll touch on some of those today. We're not going to go into a lot of detail, but the capital projects are a very significant issue. Goodness knows what we've seen with inflation since we met last May. There's been a lot of measures at the federal level to address it, but that has certainly been an important factor as well as staffing. So a lot of discussions, great topics we're going to cover today. I understand I'm supposed to start with a joke. I don't really have one, so I'm not going to even try to manufacture a joke.
Oh, you have to have a joke. Dave is in the room. That'd be a lawyer joke.
For today.
How many lawyers do you need in the room?
Yeah.
And then we can count them up.
Thank you. And we have two. So Dave Doyle and Riley in the back. So yeah, so we are well-covered there. I guess I'll just say I understand if somebody needs to check the World Cup score at some point. He's at 11. But that won't be me. I've got mine covered up here right there.
Right.
Perhaps we couldn't help checking that out. So with that, thank you. I'll turn it over.
Yeah, just one comment. So, you know, we're setting up for next year's annual budget and the mid-year budget review right now. So but the Budget Officer is Nick LeLac, the county administrator. So the Budget Officer, the person that publishes the budget, the proposed budget that we're going to see before we finalize it for next year's process. And I mean, I want to thank, you know, Nick LeLac and the administrative support, the department heads and the staff. You know, we do do this annually. The city of Bend does it every other year. We do it annually. It's, you know, getting to be a pretty big operation over time here with population growth and, you know, tax assessed value and construction happening. So but just putting it all in perspective, you know, the elected officials, the management, the staff, and then it'll be a product published by the Budget Officer. So thank you very much, Nick, for being ready to do this one. So here we go.
Thank you.
I'll just start with a couple of opening comments as well. Although those are great opening comments, just a reminder that the microphones, a little housekeeping first, pick up. So move it close to you for those at home can listen to us as well or if we do later. Sometimes we don't always pick up all the sound there. Also, I do specifically want to thank Dan Emerson and Cam for all their work in prepping so far. As mentioned, it's a large process, and there's a large amount of work that's already gone into it. And thank you, our commissioners and the community members, citizen members for sitting in on this Budget Committee, because it is a very important process, as you all know. And so we look forward to the conversation today, and welcome here. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dan.
Thank you. And not to be a dead horse here, but I have a couple of opening comments as well. I just also.
Hi, Dan.
Yeah.
Please don't use the term "dead horse."
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Commissioner Dyer.
I've had several dead horses this year. I really don't want to be reminded. So thank you, Dan.
Yes, I'm starting off on the wrong track.
Or the wrong saddle.
Yeah. No, but seriously, we do want to thank our citizen Budget Committee members. You guys are volunteers. We know that this is your time, and we really appreciate it. I also want to thank Cam Sparks, who did a lot of this presentation and has been awesome. She just joined the Budget Team this year, as well as Laura Skundrick, who isn't here right now. But she did a lot of the ARPA-related graphs today and ARPA grant management. So just thank you to all of them. And then now I think I'll pass it back to, oh, and also thank you to Brenda and the executive team, who do so much to set this process up and ordering lunch and getting all the technological gear ready. So thank you. And I'll pass it back to Bruce to kind of start up public comment.
So we have time right now for public comment? Do we have any public comment?
Oh, it's a. I'm not public. I'm part of the system. I just wanted to say the market this morning at like 6:30 was up 800, and it's now up 60. So if that doesn't tell you what we're going to be dealing with, the uncertainty of the financial markets, you know, we still have horrible inflation and, you know, and we have so many employees. And, you know, they're facing that inflation, you know, with our CPI at 4%. So it's going to be incredibly, I believe, challenging times. The economists are, you know, they're all saying different things. You can find, you can find someone that will match whatever you want.
Whatever you believe.
Yes, whatever you want to believe. Thank you, Bruce.
Are there any other comments at this point, thoughts that you have before we go forward?
If we're making, if we're making opening comments, I just wanted to say that it's become very clear that there is a desperate need for workforce and affordable housing in our community. And I am looking at the budget this year with an eye towards how we could create some opportunities to establish local funding sources for projects that address housing affordability and workforce housing or housing insecurity in other ways. Yep, so I like that. That'll just cue you or tee you on, you know, like clue you to where some of my questions and comments today are coming from.
That on the shoulder point at the fence there.
Any other thoughts or comments? If not, I'm going to turn it back over to Dan.
Okay, thank you. I think we're ready to get the PowerPoint going. So of course, welcome to the Midyear Budget Committee update. On today's topics, we are going to be going through the county finance update for this fiscal year. So we'll be looking at, you know, budget to actuals and things like that for assorted funds. And then we will be moving into the budget assumptions for next budget year. All of this will be at a very high level, as Nick noted. And then we'll be moving into changes to budget process. And finally, kind of some key dates on the budget calendar. Make sure that all of you guys are available to attend and make sure there's no scheduling conflicts. So today's conversation, as we said, is a high-level focus on the countywide financial perspective and budget assumptions. We aren't going to be digging too much into departmental. So specific departmental focus will occur during Budget Week or, in some cases, prior to Budget Week. Of course, Health Services does have a budget update prior to the Budget Week itself. And we can always look into questions for any other departments prior to Budget Week as well. All right. So going into the fiscal year '23 county financial, county finance update, we can start off with our assessed value here. We've had a 5.5% year average growth since 2014, pretty consistent right there. In FY '23, we did budget that 5.5% growth, so slightly higher, but we did actually come in at 5.50 actual growth. So the assessed value has been very consistent year over year. We did see significant growth, however, in the market value between fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23. No surprise to any of us in this room on that. There was a 13.2% year average growth since 2014 in market value and a 30.5% growth in fiscal year '23. And I just invite if anybody has any questions or comments on anything, just go ahead and open up.
So Dan, we would attribute this assessed value growth both to addition of new properties to our tax base as well as the incremental growth in assessed, assessed value of existing properties. And that's why it's more than 3%. It's 5%.
Mm-hmm.
Just trying to make sure I understood that.
Yes.
So that, I mean, does that mean basically everything above 3% is attributed to the amount of growth that we've had?
That is my understanding, but I would need to check with the assessor, Scott Langton, to, for sure to state that. But my understanding is that typically you move at about 3.3%, and then anything about that is attributed to growth and other factors. So moving forward to Deschutes County tax levies, the county permanent rate remained the same yes, last year. We're at $1.22. The authorized rate, of course, is $1.28. So we have 6 cent ceiling maxed. We have 6 cents of room right there. Countywide law enforcement remained the same at $1.05 per $1,000 assessed value. And it goes up to $1.25. So there's 20 cents of room in there. County extension remained the same at 2 cents, 911, at 36 cents with 7 cents remaining. Additional levies, the rural law enforcement fiscal year '23 did go up. I believe that was a 9 cent increase from $1.34 to $1.43. They still have 12 cents left in their max right now for their additional levy. Sun River Service District, Blackbeute Ranch, have all stayed the same since then.
Just as a minor note, the Sun River rate is wrong, but the budget revenue is correct.
Oh, okay. What's, sorry, what's the rate right now, Jim?
I want to say it's $1.47 actual. And then there is the additional levy, but I didn't think you were factoring that in in this particular one, because the budget revenue that you're pulling in is right on the 545.
Okay, we'll update that slide. Thank you. Property tax collections, you know, that's a function of, our actual collections is a function of our collection percentage, which we are at 96% year over year, which is a really great property tax collection percentage and our assessed value, which, as I said earlier, was 5.5 actual growth this year. This is a graph of our current and prior year collections. We've had 5.3% year average increase since 2017, and 5.9% is actually estimated in fiscal year '23 currently. Moving on to.
Do you see that, I mean, you know, it's been, the compound growth has been greater as you've, as we've advanced forward. Do you anticipate that? Or are you forecasting that? Or do you try and keep it at the, at the 5.5 pretty consistently?
Yeah, we'll get into the forecast. I think we've seen a little bit of drop in some revenues, permitting revenues and things of that, which we might look to say may be a very small AV assessed value decrease. But we're not expecting, and I did speak with Scott, our assessor on this, we're not expecting to have a decrease in collection rate, per se, which is the main factor in kind of what drives the actual growth.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So general fund update. Our general fund is currently made up of multiple departments. The District Attorney's Office, our clerk in recording, assessor, veteran services, our tax department, our properties department, and our medical examiner, as well as our BOPDA department. And it supports, it also supports other departmental transfers. So it supports Health Services, received about $6.6 million last year, and that's broken up between Public Health and Behavioral Health. And our Community Justice Juvenile Program received about $6.5 million. And then there's about $7 to $8 million more in general fund transfers that go out to additional departments throughout the organization. The general fund ending balance itself is projected to be around $900,000 higher than budgeted. Most of that is due to our beginning working capital came in $870,000 higher than projected, our actuals did. We also have some vacancy savings of around $900,000. And we're estimating that revenue, recording revenues, however, will be down approximately $870,000, $850,000 this year due to the decrease in loan origination that we're seeing currently.
Was the vacancy savings that low of a percentage of the, of the general fund? I realize that the headcount in the general fund is actually fairly low, but that, but the, you know, you said there's a vacancy savings, but you started off $870,000 higher, and now you're only $900,000 higher. I would have expected that to be higher.
It's because the vacancy savings is being balanced out against the recording revenues decreasing. They're almost identical.
Okay.
So we're basically ending up at that $870,000 over $900,000 over. So vacancy savings is $30,000 more than the recording revenue is down.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So this will be a big conversation going forward throughout Budget Week and even today in the mid-year Budget Week. It's going to be the Capital Reserve. So just to refresh everyone, the Capital Reserve is used for all future debt service. The courthouse is the major conversation there this year in capital needs. And it is one barometer of our financial health and fiscal stability. Thank you. And the general fund above our contingency requirement, which is 33% or four months, that's our general fund contingency requirement, the general fund above that amount is annually transferred into our capital reserve for debt service and for capital needs throughout the county, as well as some for capital maintenance as well. We are projecting $4.9 million transfer from the general fund this year to the Capital Reserve in fiscal year '23, which would put our capital reserve balance around $5.5 million in fiscal year '23. So here on this graph, you can see that our capital reserve ending fund balance was fairly high. In fiscal year '19, we were pushing at $12 million, but we made the decision to fund some, some projects out of cash needs and reduce that capital reserve, which is effectively what the capital reserve was there for, to pay for those capital needs. But reserve levels have decreased over the last few years from $12 million to about $5.5 million right now. If not for a $3.5 million transfer of TRT into the capital reserve fund last year, the balance would actually have been $1.9 million. So that was a major decision for this Budget Committee last year was to transfer those funds in recognition that we will have some more debt service and some more capital needs coming up. Large unallocated TRT contributions will be, continue to be needed to cover future debt and capital. So moving on to the transient room tax history, we saw, it's important to show that this is pretty volatile, especially right now. TRT, it's very hard to project from, you know, 2000 to 2012, there was only a 1.2%, you know, year average increase, actually a little bit less than a COLA, you know, for our TRT. And then we had kind of the housing market effects, and it dipped down till about 2012. And since then, we've seen a 14-year, or a 14% year increase since 2012 up until now. And actually, if you look at the graph, you can see that in 2021, our actual collections were short, less than $8 million. And in 2023, this fiscal year, we're projecting $13.9 million. So that's a jump of almost $6 million in TRT, which makes it very hard to estimate. It makes it hard for us to understand if it was really COVID-impacted a lot of it or if it is permitting and other, other factors. So we are projecting, however, that for this fiscal year, that we will have $330,690 more than budgeted. That is a very early projection. We may have less than that. We may have more of that depending on the behavior in the summer as well as the winter, the snow. So typically, the surplus is transferred to capital reserve for debt and capital needs. In fiscal year '23, we transferred $3.5 million. Any questions about transient room tax or comments?
I have, so I have a couple. One, I'll throw, I guess the first thing from an anecdotal standpoint, it looks like at least the TRT behavior that we had during COVID is getting more back to the pre-COVID stuff. I'm looking over at Judy. Are you seeing similar in terms of sisters? I mean, my South County, I've seen the rental histories are getting back. The rental agencies are all talking about now we're seeing a shoulder season again. Are you seeing similar things, you know, out in your unallocated area, unincorporated areas?
The August numbers increased 7%, and then September was pretty flat at 2.2%. And the reason it's concerning that it only increased 2.2% is because prior year, it was double digits. It was 35% increases and 55% increase, 54% increases. Over that August-September period, we don't have the October-November numbers yet. So I think there's concern about it flattening. And so we'll just move, see how it goes moving forward.
I think it's more, I think it's almost more getting back to normal. You know, if I've been talking to some of the businesses through the, through the chamber and some of the other spaces in South County and up in, on the North Side of Redmond, it looks like it's a little, it looks like it's more returning to a seasonal activity. Now, I don't, I, you know, and thank you, by the way, for supplying some of the TRT numbers that we were asking for in a separate context. But it looks like that's rolling in. But the, what's interesting is that the summer numbers were, were still pretty solid. I mean, you're pretty close in terms of where you're going to be on TRT for the fiscal year, I would imagine, if, if there is truly a shoulder season.
We're ahead.
Yeah, you're ahead.
At the moment.
Yeah.
And September was really smoky.
I'm going to, yeah, well, and I'm going to predict November was pretty awful with the weather that hit.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's, the question is what's going to happen in the summer, I think. And, and those are really good points is a flattening or going back to normal. And I think one of the things that we're looking at with Finance and Admin is, is what is normal? Is it the 2021 rate of, you know, $11 million in collection? Or is it the 2020 rate of 7.7? Or, you know, somewhere in between there? And I think that's, that's the difficulty that we have, you know, kind of forecasting this in the future.
And don't forget inflation in rentals is gone, you know, has gone way, way, way up.
Right.
So that's the other, the compounding, it looks like '22, it was, the budget versus actual was only, it was $450,000 off. You know, we were under $450,000. So this year, if we're only off, you know, 330, it's still positive, but we're hearing it slowing down. Thanksgiving was definitely slowing down the numbers from COVID.
From a business perspective, I think business owners are concerned about that flattening because they're still trying to recover from COVID. So to see increases, and then everything dropped off at COVID, and now it's coming back. So I think I'm hearing from business owners that they're a bit concerned about it. Yes.
Yeah, but I think at least some of the COVID data that I saw, and I haven't seen anything recently, but the, the room rate costs have gone up equally as well, which, which drives, drives an increase. So it's really, there's the aspect of how many rooms are being rented and how much are you charging to do it? And I think that's where you really have, I, I'm going to guess that latter part is where you're really seeing the growth in the, in the last year or two.
When you look at TRT, you really need to look at it holistically because that's a large part of how we track how other businesses are doing, especially in the rural parts of Deschutes County. So if the hotel rooms are full, the restaurants are full, and the retail is doing well. And if it's raising the room rate, it's not necessarily more customers coming in, which impacts the restaurants. Even though TRT is going up, it doesn't mean more people are eating in the restaurants and more, and that retail is doing well. So I think we have to keep that in mind, that's how we track in the more rural parts. Because we don't have the COVID, the Visit Center Oregon budget or the Visit Bend budget to do the studies. So we look at room tax, and that's how we gauge how everyone else in the community is doing in the business sector. So we are hearing concerns from business owners. I will tell you, they're concerned.
Thank you.
I just want to flag, at the moment, we're $330,000 over, over budget in terms of revenue, TRT revenue. And if that trend continues or if we, if we reach the end of the fiscal year and there is, there is an increment there, that would certainly be one of the, you know, one of the candidates I would see for housing investments. You know, we, we assumed that we were going to use TRT for all kinds of things. And if we come in above that, you know, I, I would consider those dollars available for, for other things, not necessarily just, I mean, the default assumption is going to be, well, we're going to plow that into our, our capital reserves and the courthouse project. But it's really, you know, while that is, while that is our big responsibility at the county, we need to think about our other responsibilities to the community.
I mean, I always play the guardrails discussion. And so you, you know, your two easy guardrails here is it stays relatively flat or, you know, to the, the growth curve stays relatively flat or at least close to the bottom of things or you even get a slight reset. And that was some things that we've modeled previously. Or you can, or you say, okay, the, there, we got, we got actually a reset up and we're growing from there. The answer always lies somewhere in the middle. I think the bigger question is really where, what do you, kind of where you're going, Commissioner Chang, you know, what are you doing with it or where are you allocating it? And how firmly are you allocating it? And that, I mean, we'll, we'll have longer discussions on that, you know, based on some of the other things that are coming up. But I think my concern, you know, again, representing the taxpayers, my concern really comes down to, we want to be, I want to be careful not to, not to say, oh, there's a slush fund here that we can redirect where we, where we think we see holes. I think we want to be really intentional about where we're allocating this based on some of the projections where it's going. And if the projections meet or exceed, then we can have, then you can have discussions about what's the opportunity. If you lose that, it's you have to decide what opportunity do you want to take off the table, right?
But I mean, I guess I would argue that the taxpayer's primary concern in relation to the courthouse is, is what they're putting, you know, what they're paying to the general fund to, or the general fund reserves to pay for that courthouse expansion. I, I think that one of the really important things we need to consider with TRT is how you use TRT to reinvest in the components of our economy that keep TRT coming.
Yes.
So, you know, the, it, it's great to be able to, it's great to be able to rent a short-term rental house. And if there's no way to serve you coffee at the, at the coffee shop, when you go, you might not think that this is such a great place to visit anymore.
I would agree.
And I would just comment on this as well. You know, this is a fun discussion always, TRT. I think there's room for both.
Yeah.
I'm concerned about the Capital Reserve Fund, and I think it's very important for the county to pay down their debt. With inflation, we don't know what's going to happen. There's a lot of uncertainty in the market, as Commissioner Deere mentioned earlier. And I think we need to be fiscally responsible and make sure we're paying down that debt. But I also think after COVID, it really brought on this whole other area of need in the community. And I don't think the county should be in a position, the county's always done a really good job of helping neighbor impact and different projects and giving land away for affordable housing, like they did in Bend and in Redmond, and making sure that those projects are complete. So, I mean, those are things the county has done. And they've really stepped up during COVID to help the nonprofit sector and the business sector. And I think there's a, a cry to the county from these different sectors in the economy and in the nonprofit sector to say, we really need the county's help more now than ever. And so I think if we don't know what's going to happen with the economy, I think the county should be in a position to figure out allocation on how those funds are used, make sure the Capital Reserve Fund is healthy, and figure out how do we help the community and what sectors do we want to prioritize? Is it homeless? Is it housing? Is it food insecurity? And is it economic development? Which obviously, all those would be mine preferences. But I think it's time for the county to look at that and just say, maybe we ought to look at the way we're giving and the, what we've done in the past and how we've done that, and look at how we do that in the future. Maybe it's time for that bigger conversation.
The word I, the word that came to mind when I was reviewing things earlier was intentionality. I, I want to be really intentional with, with where we're allocating some of the potential upswings. We've, you know, if property tax is staying pretty consistent at 5.5, you need to look at where some of the, where some of the other options are and say, okay, let's be very intentional with, with where that growth can be allocated that is going to be the best way for the county. I know that I have a solution, but I, but I think we really need to be serious about discussing it, like you're saying.
And I would use the business grants as an example with the ARPA funds that came through. Say something happens to the economy. What we did there is we took grant funding and we gave out, we set up grant committees and we took in the applications and then had committees decide allocation and where those funds went. And it helped the businesses pay their rent for a month, which may have helped them from going out of business. So if something like that happens in the future, I would just like the county to consider something like that again. I wouldn't want them to say, no, we're putting all this in capital reserve. I just think that was a great example of how we probably saved. You know, we grant funded 99 businesses in Sisters Country. So, and that was in large part to those funds and the allocation of the county to particularly the rural communities, which what, what I'm passionate about is the rural communities who really need the extra help. So that's a great example of how the county helped, and I think how they could help in the future.
Thank you. All right. So that was our room tax history. And now we're going to look at our actual expenditures for fiscal year 23. You can see if you, on the last slide that we budgeted somewhere, I think in the vicinity of 13.5 million in TRT, and we're coming in a little over. But our actual expenditures this year are 19.2 million. So we ate into kind of our reserve or in our beginning fund balance there. Primarily due to grants and contributions for the Sun River. That was $4 million in fiscal year 23, $1 million to Mount Bachelor for their biomass project, and $600,000 for the Deschutes Trail and Coalition. So we really don't have, only thing that's left in our reserve now for TRT is $4 million for the upcoming two payments to Sun River. So the total Sun River project was $8 million, and we have another $2 million payment in fiscal year 24, followed by a $2 million payment in fiscal year 25. And we do have those locked in our reserve.
Dan, I have a question. What's in yellow?
Yeah, that's the law enforcement. Sorry if that's too bright to see it. Yeah.
I could read it in bed last night and I can't read it.
Yeah, I should have changed that to.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Contrast wasn't, okay, so that's law enforcement?
That is law enforcement, right.
That's primarily, if I remember, most of that is, is Sheriff's Office, South County.
Yeah, it's, it's all of the Sheriff's Office from unallocated TRT. And, and that.
I mean, Jim, Jim was just asking whether it's constant that those, the sheriff uses those funds in a concentrated way in South County. Across the entire.
It was originally done that way. I think, I think the Sheriff's Office has been mostly using it to, to fill the budget all the, all the way around. But I think the origin, if I recall, the original intent in this was to, was to address some of the big areas of growth, notably South County. And that was a while ago.
Now, that's, that's the historic, it used to be the 2.6 million.
Right.
That was kind of the cost to run the jail. And then, I mean, it just, it goes for the whole Sheriff's Office.
Okay.
So then it was increased, it was increased one time, an additional 500,000, one time for two years in a row.
Yeah, I remember that discussion in May.
There's originally the cost of operating the jail countywide before the permanent rates even. So it's, there's a long history there. So it was a number that was just agreed upon, reoccurring revenue to the Sheriff's Office. The permanent rates are in place and you notice the rates haven't been maximized, they haven't needed to be. So that's just been a, a revenue source to public safety. As I say, the, the jail operations was the original justification. But now it's been diversified into other, you know, Sheriff's Office operations and needs. And it was raised from the original number also.
If I could just take a, take a moment to, to flag a Sheriff's Office budgetary consideration that just kind of, that really just dawned on me very recently. So the commissioners did our, our annual tour of the jail a few weeks ago. And the Captain Schultz has been describing the, the big overhaul that is really going to make the jail a much better, a much better jail, a jail that's much better at rehabilitating people and, you know, setting them up for success when they leave than, than it currently is. And I, you know, it finally occurred to me that I should ask him, you know, how, how they were going to pay for it. And he said, he said, well, we're thinking of going out for a bond measure. To which I, I reminded him that the last time they went out for a bond measure for a jail investment, it didn't pass. So all of a sudden, there's another very large capital investment on the radar screen that I don't think we have good strategies like figured out to, 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 to fund at, at the moment. So as we, as we think, as we look at the amount of money that we're allocating to the Sheriff's Office from TRT, as we're looking at the Sheriff's Office rates, I hope that that'll be in the back of our minds is, you know, kind of how you, how we work with what we are deploying towards the Sheriff's Office right now with an eye towards a really big Sheriff's Office capital investment in the future to, to think about. I mean, you, somebody, somebody who I was talking to about this said, well, you know, if you got to do that and you have to do the courthouse, why don't you do some kind of big criminal justice voter bond measure? And, you know, instead of just borrowing all this money, you know, you could, you could, I mean, we're going to borrow the money anyway. But, but you could have a, you know, you could ask the taxpayers to, to fund an additional increment to, to, to cover that, that bundle of projects. And I, I thought that was an interesting idea. But just, you know, throwing out that, that Sheriff's Office jail remodel consideration for noodling towards the future.
And there's some others that, I mean, and again, they're going to come up and later in the presentation, but there's some other things that, that are also tugging at, you know, the budget heartstrings, so to speak. And so I think, again, there's an, there's a need for intentionality in terms of what's your priority for funding? And, and how do you make sure that you're getting, you're getting an ask, not an estimate in terms of how you want to do the spend? And I'll bring, I'm sure I'll bring that up a little later as well.
So total expenditures also included in this, though, in the total expenditures is actually a transfer of $3.5 million, as we spoke of in TRT, to the Capital Reserve for future debt service. And that was critical, I guess, from that $1.9 million reserve level to, to about 5.5 here. The General County piled down here, this bucket, or sorry, this pie chart, this 23% or $4.5 million for General County includes transfers to health services specifically for environmental health, restaurant inspections. That was a board decision some years ago, Justice Court, and of course, the transfer to the Capital Reserve. Are there any questions about our TRT expenditures this year? Moving forward, we are looking at the County Health Benefits Trust. As we have talked about for several years, the county's strategy was to subsidize premiums, to spend down reserves. We felt like our reserve levels, when you look out at 2019, were obviously too high. Our reserves was equal to kind of our claim numbers for a year there. And so we moved to spend down those reserves to align with our policy of five to eight million dollar reserve level. It was spent down quicker than projected due to pent-up demand from COVID-19. Last year, the fund's ending balance decreased by $4 million in fiscal year 22, which was more than we were projecting because of that spike that you see in the claims right there. Currently, right now, we're, we're seeing that premiums are not covering costs, which was, again, part of the strategy of spending down our reserve. But going forward, now that we've hit our reserve target, the county's going to need to increase rates.
So it was, so it was interesting because they did a little curve fitting on this based on, you know, based on just some eyeball estimates. And then, and also the area under the curve pieces. And, and the spike in '22 was pretty substantial. It looks like the '23 return, you know, fits a little more to normal. But that spike in '22 was much greater than the, than the lack of spike through COVID. So is the, is that a curve reset, do you think? Or do you?
It's a, I mean, in talking with human resources and looking at the forecast, it's a, it's a partial curve reset. So it wouldn't necessarily go back to 2021 rates. It looks like they're still having a lag with pent-up health services demand. And the county's growing as well. So we are seeing a slight increase over kind of what you would probably fit for 2020, 21, 2019 in there. But certainly nothing compared to 2022, which was about, I think it was like 45% more than kind of we were expecting at the time. And now I think it's, it's dropped quite a bit to about 10 or so percent month over month.
Yeah, it's, I mean, if you reset to 2018, that's, you know, that's, that's probably your worst case scenario. The drop in '19 is really interesting because that was pre-COVID. You know, so there's, there's obviously an explainer in there that, that we don't have. But, you know, where it resets in that to either '18 or '19 is probably going to be pretty telling.
Yeah. Well, I mean, and, and, you know, obviously, when we're looking at claims, different claims costs, different amounts. If somebody has a long-term something or other, the pharmacy medication cost can spike and for a while, those, those claims will increase. So, but great points. Any other questions about the county health benefits? Moving on to the county FTE update, we were asked to give a FTE update. We've had 4% average FTE growth since fiscal year 2019. As of right now, obviously, we're still kind of mid-year right now. And by the time we finish this year, there'll certainly be more FTE through the budget process or mid-year process. But we've gained about 203 FTE in the last five years. We estimate that as an increase in personnel costs of around $26 million. And as you can see, due to COVID and other factors, you know, vacancy rates have, have doubled since 2019. So that's kind of our, we obviously need this operational growth to continue to be providing services to the county, as the county's the fastest-growing county in the country at times. So those things are needed. But there's also a story here. And so if there's any questions.
So I have a couple down, down this path. I mean, it's, it's an interesting comment. You need the operational growth to be able to support the growth of the county. But, you know, then again, at the, then again, at the same time, you have to make sure that you're actually filling that. Otherwise, what you're doing is, again, costing yourself opportunity in your budget by allocating dollars to where you're, to where you're unable to spend them. So on that, of the, of the vacancies that you're seeing, how many of those are vacancies in existing headcount versus the inability to fill the recs, or the, the new positions that you're establishing? I, I'm sure that's going to be pretty variable department by department, right? I guess it would be the first thing. So I think it would be really educational in the May meetings to actually have the departments come in and actually do their subcategories of this to talk about, here's where our vacancies are and, and here's the, here's what we're not managing to accomplish as a result of that. Because especially, and you know, we'll get to it on the next slide, with the, with the growth in a lot of the county, you know, county headcount that's coming in, it's, you got to right-size that to be able to actually address the issue, rather than say, we want to address it and then not have the personnel to fill it.
Right.
It's, I mean, I had an old boss that used to say, any rec that, that's open for six months just gets cut, try it again some other time. I'm not suggesting that. And again, it's not my job to, to do policy, but I'd be really interested in what are the policies that the county is enacting? So that we're not building a false budget around, I got yelled at for, for talking about building a plan on hope last time. So let me see if I can find a different way to say it. I have not said lumping the snake yet. But I, you know, it'd be really interesting to see what organizations are doing a reasonable job at actually fulfilling, fulfilling the mission with the headcount that they have, rather than, rather than trying to grow headcount to address what they haven't been able to fill.
It's like the building department. Their FTE percentage is 17.64. And like Nick and I were talking about it yesterday, they feel like they're actually handling because they are, they are a bit slower. So, but they're, yeah, they're missing 13 people. They are. And, you know, it's like the Sheriff's Office is up at 13%, and health services is at almost 12%. So, and the average is what? Almost 12?
I would also like to say, though, that creating, creating an expectation and kind of like taking up opportunity in your budget for positions that don't get filled. I have seen health services a number of times in the last year come to us with, you know, like we, we want to make this, this FTE permanent, or, you know, we want to add half of, you know, 0.6 to this, you know, to this, to this part-time position. And when we asked them how they're going to do it, they said, well, we're going to use the vacancy savings from, you know, the last six months to cover this portion, and then start of the fiscal year, we'll cover the rest like this. So they are, we're seeing people in real time taking, you know, the opportunity that we budgeted and translating it into, you know, in a very responsive way to the, you know, actual opportunities that are presenting themselves. Because, you know, the Oregon Health Authority is springing these new opportunities on us and, you know, new opportunities and new, in some cases, you know, new obligations or commitments on us on a regular basis. So it, it can be helpful to, to have that. I guess that's essentially flexibility. It's not the way I would want the flexibility to be, you know, like, oh, we, we couldn't hire somebody to do this for six months, so we've got a little flexibility. That's not. That's not my preferred way of providing flexibility to be responsive, but that is a way that we're, we're seeing, um, that opportunity that we have kind of taken off the table for some things being reused within departments.
Well, and I'll give that credit as, as, as forward-thinking in terms of if I, if I have the flexibility in the personnel, I can shift the personnel to be able to address an immediate need. And, uh, health is probably, well, health is always a large discussion here, but health is, given some of the changes I'm gonna, I'm predicting may happen at the state level, I think we're going to be having a very different conversation, you know, over the next couple of years in terms of where health is going and, and where the spend is going. So the personnel piece is one aspect of it, and I, and I appreciate that flexibility. The, in a different context, I'm seeing issues where the allocation of personnel and the inability to, to spend on the personnel is actually then affecting, you know, a material and services budget or something else. And that's a, that's a different type of pain that you're inflicting on yourself. Um, and so I, I just get really cautious when I see, especially the big, the big vacancy rates and jobs, because yeah, you can then department by department address that, but you're overall still missing the mark for that, for the target you're hoping to hit.
Yeah. I mean, it, it, we are, we're, it may not be a whole hand tied behind our back, but we're trying to provide services under capacity, um, which is a concern.
It's like a little finger trap.
Goes back, goes back to the housing consideration.
Yes.
Um, because I, I, yeah, uh, you know, employee housing for the county, that's a whole, that's like a very, that's a very specific subpiece of the broader housing, housing discussion, but, um, that is another place where, you know, we, yeah, if we have opportunities to develop employee, a little bit of employee housing or, you know, ways to help people who want to come here and work because it's a great community and it'd be a great job, but who can't afford to do so, um, that could, I, I think that could really distinguish us as an employer in our recruitment and retention efforts, which would help not have so many vacancies. Possibly. I, I did want to ask the, this, this $26 million number, is that over a four-year period in increase? That, okay.
That would be overall 200, that's just an estimate for the 202 FTE over that, um, over that four, four and a half year period.
And the way that the 2% plays into that is, you know, the 2% increase across the board is just now where we are budgeting each of those, or you're estimating at each of those, each of those, um, position costs with 2% more.
Right.
I'll just jump in quickly. I do think it's, uh, Jim's point's well taken, and we, it's, it's a great conversation for us to have in May about the vacancies. And I think one of the things that we're seeing is we talk about the vacancy rates have doubled since 2019. I think that gap has begun to close over the last several months. I think we've been filling a lot of positions over the last few months, so that's been a trend, but I don't, but it may not be, uh, as true today as it was even a couple of months ago, and it may be even different in a couple more months with the vacancies. But drilling down further on the departments, I think it's really important. I'll just give two examples. One, uh, discussing this with Peter Gatauski, the community development director, and as Commissioner Adair mentioned, um, they have more positions in their budget this year than, than they currently need, given their, um, given their workloads and their projecting, projections going forward. They very well may reduce some of those positions in their upcoming budget because, as you said, if they're budgeting for that number of FTE, then they're also increasing fees to cover positions they may not need. So they really need to make sure they have the accurate number of, of positions for their projected permit volumes and planning and all those other aspects. So that's one department that how they're, they're really looking strategically at what their FTE, uh, needs are going forward and how those may change. The other, another, a different one would be 911, where goodness knows they're doing everything they possibly can to fill every position they, they, they have, and it would sure be great if we could even authorize them to overfill positions, even should they even have the number of qualified applicants, just given, um, just the ongoing great resignation that we see. So those are two different departments, and it'll just be interesting to see where these trends, trends go now over the next three to six months. Are they, are, are, are the vacancy rates beginning to decline? I know that in some departments like solid waste, they had real challenges filling positions, and now they're having a lot of success, um, which is, which is a great thing. So, uh, we're, we're trying to monitor the, the FTE and the vacancy rates and what that means for our budget very closely. Whitney Eric and I, um, we, we share responsibilities working with each, each department. We divide those, and, and so we're pretty in, in tune with each department and what their needs are in going forward. So great discussion to have, I think, in, in, in May, but certainly we continue to monitor that weekly and monthly.
And there's also the aspect of depending on where you're hiring or depending on, you know, depending on your focus on hiring, you might, you might be pulling in candidates that need significant training, and then you have to make sure that the budget that you have is actually, is actually supporting that, or more importantly, the environment that you have is actually supporting that. I mean, the, the simple example is the sheriff's department. If you're pulling in somebody that's not been to academy, you've got a nine-month delay being able to get anyone through academy. And I, I realize that sheriff department, that's Ben, that's a lot of other resources, uh, some near and dear to my heart. Uh, so I'm sure there are other cases in that, probably less extreme, where you need to make sure that you're actually building a budget or you have a budget that says, I can pull in somebody that wasn't quite the skill level that I was hoping, and I can still get them up to speed in a reasonable amount of time to accomplish my goal.
And then I think just, uh, kind of on top of this conversation is this slide, which is just kind of the detailed FTE additions, uh, by department, and then, uh, that is the graph on the left, uh, and then the graph on the right is going to be the net FTE changes, um, mid-year FTE additions versus additions, uh, through the budget process of special requests. And again, as, as we've kind of talked about it, we are looking at, um, the FTE to meet the growing service demand while still trying to be fiscally responsible and, and analyze each one of those.
Dan, do these numbers include, uh, limited duration as well as regular positions or, or just regular positions?
They would include all FTE limited duration. Okay. And Jim, we noted that, uh, it would be good to have in the May presentations for departments to be able to speak to vacancies and, and FTE and hiring challenges and things of that nature.
All right. Thank you.
And I would just like to acknowledge county's departments and county staff. I think they run very efficiently and they do a great job. And having these positions available actually helps with the retention too, because if people overworked, they're going to quit their job and they're going to go somewhere else. So I think it's important that you don't have an overburdened, um, workload on staff as well.
Sends a message that we're trying to get you some help.
Yeah.
That's a reminder, we need to, I'll recruit for 911, uh, operators. I mean, that's the classic situation. It's a 24-hour operation, there's shifts day and night, and if they're understaffed, somebody's going to cover a shift. And then, uh, since it's a required 24-hour commitment to keep the doors open, it's required overtime, and it just starts to fall in on itself. So, um, and we're not going to, we, we need that capacity. We need that, that, uh, amount of call takers and dispatchers on the floor all, all times. So, you know, that's going to be real important.
Yeah, and there's a huge balance between, you know, the, the excitement that you get in terms of collecting overtime pay and the burnout that you suffer for having to do all the overtime.
Yeah, especially over the holiday.
Yeah, it's.
And the summer surges, yeah.
And don't forget, we've got supervisors now that are having to go back to those positions because we are so short. Yeah, they were at 9.43, um, on October's financials. And I think we have maybe another retirement or something, um, and she's got a couple of people coming in, but it's, it's just, it's really frightening there. It is a, it is a, you know, it's like a public service. It's, it is a career to work at 911. It takes a really special person, and they've made it so much easier. The typing test is like 42 words a minute now. You don't even have to capitalize. You can do it all online. I mean, they have done so many things to make this job, um, easier for people to pick it up if they have the personality for it.
But it does, it's not, it's not an incredibly well-paid job, and housing is really expensive here. And I, I really think that, you know, you look at jobs like, like the 911 dispatchers, and if there was a housing opportunities connected with those positions, I think it would actually make a huge difference. Um, like I can, I can tell everybody I know that there are 911 positions available, and it's, um, I don't, I don't think that that's making a big difference in terms of the recruitment and retention efforts.
Moving forward, the American Rescue Plan Act update. So this is ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, we received approximately $38.4 million, um, from the federal government for the COVID-19 pandemic response, and, um, I think, you know, we've, we've done a great job of allocating that, uh, throughout the community. One of the things that we've been talking about is affordable housing. We did allocate a million, or eight, eight million dollars, uh, to affordable housing from the American Rescue Plan Act. About, uh, 4.5 of that has been, been spent right now. Other major, um, investments were in childcare, houselessness, uh, the public health COVID-19 teams and the response to the pandemic, uh, as well as, uh, water infrastructure, and of course, the small business assistance grants that Judy alluded to earlier. We have about $400,000 remaining in unallocated ARPA funding, and right now, uh, the ARPA grant mission is to be reaching out to our 60 or so sub recipients and just checking in on the progress of their capital projects and, and their operations, so.
You know, the sad story though, we gave a million dollars to childcare at OSU Cascade, and the interim vice president, when I was up there a month ago, said, you know, Patty, we so appreciate that money. It was, you know, the little kids, a million. He goes, we're still losing 300,000 this year with our program. It staffed, I mean, I said, well, are you full of kids? And he goes, well, yeah, we have 80-some kids, and they still are not running it, um, profitably. And he goes, I'm not asking the county for 300,000, but that's, you know, that is indicative of how scary childcare is. And he said, the hospital, remember, we also did the hospital, they had land for St. Charles, and he said, that program, if they hire that out, that's going to even lose more money. So, oh gosh.
And, and Laura Scundrick and myself are in conversations with the hospital and OSU just checking up, making sure on that project.
So have they started it at the hospital?
Not yet.
No?
Yeah.
And are they saying, are they telling you that it, the projection looks like it just isn't going to, it's going to be in the hole? I mean, are they willing to cover that for their employees?
Yeah, I don't think they, uh, well, for the employees is one thing. I mean, I think we funded the, the building plus the operational costs, and I think they need more time to look at legislation and different funding sources at this point. It's something that we are planning to take to the board here, probably in January.
Okay.
It's really, it's really hard to run a childcare.
Um, it is Rebecca at St. Charles, and at OSU, it's Steve Pittman.
It's really hard to, to make a childcare pencil when the, the major revenue stream is, um, parent tuition payments, you know? You're balancing basically, you know, do I, do I charge, uh, do I, I, do I charge enough to run my, my childcare operation? Um, or do I break the parents who are paying the tuition, uh, to, to, to have a childcare? Um, and without, uh, there, there is a lot of discussion about, um, state or federal, you know, uh, support for childcare operations. You know, there, there was part of that Build Back Better bill that was, a package that was running through Congress, um, last year. Uh, and, you know, we're, we're going to be in this same place, that, that basically childcare doesn't pencil, um, as long as you're, as long as you're asking parents to bear the entire cost. Um, and there has to be a way to, um, for the society, the economy that benefits from the existence of childcare to, to cover some of the costs of that.
So it sounds from, you know, if you did an individual drill down on any of these, you know, allocated versus expenditure, versus expenditures, the reasoning is going to be different across all of these in terms of why the money's not being spent or, or, why it's not being spent in a focused way. Is there, the, so, so thanks for answering that question before I asked it. Um, the, but the, but the other aspect of this is, um, how much of a concern is it that there's money that can be delivered here that can be spent, but then there's no pickup plan afterwards for how you can continue to fund that past the, past the use of the ARPA funds?
Yeah, well, I mean, part of the, so just part of the reason that the orange bar doesn't max out with the, with the blue bar, right? The obligations is because it takes a while to do the contracts. Some of these are reimbursable contracts due to, you know, federal CFRs and uniform administrative requirements, right? So, um, while others are, uh, lump sum contracts, right? And we can spend those out. So that's kind of the next phase of ARPA, is that we're going to be going alongside each of our sub recipients and asking them, um, what are the challenges? Do you have any challenges? Some of them, as you can see, have spent, um, or as you can probably surmise from them, have already spent for operational and have already spent for, and are doing fine. But the, we did allocate a large amount to capital projects throughout many different scopes, and there were supply chain issues, and there have been inflation issues. So I think over this next coming year, that's going to be the big task of the ARPA team, is to reach out to them and, and get a feel by project of, of how sustainable it is and, and if we'll be able to, to do this. And we're obviously hoping that we can.
I think on those capital projects in particular, the financial viability of some of these projects in the private sector is just with cost escalation, uh, inflation has really had an impact there. And so I think that follow-up and finding out if there's a budget gap and how they're going to, how they're.
Excuse me, how they're going to solve for that.
Very important.
Well, we had, we have a 906,000 in a contingency for childcare, plus the, the state came in with 8.2 million for, um, childcare in central Oregon, but apparently that's very specific, and I haven't quite figured out where that 8 million dollars is going to go.
And that goes, if I recall, and this is off the top of my head, so I believe it's Neighborhood Impact, Neighborhood Impact, excuse me, with Karen Prowe, and for that, those state dollars, I believe it's, uh, for the entire region, the tri-regional area, and that I believe she is, we're trying to schedule her to come talk to the board about the use of those funds in January.
In January?
Mm-hmm. And about the use of her funds, um, because they had substantial allocations, of course, for the childcare program here as well within our county.
And to circle back to Jim's concern about, the question about like, well, how do you sustain these programs after the ARPA grant is, is expended? We, um, we were very, very disciplined in the beginning and still pretty disciplined throughout about, um, choosing one-time investments. So, you know, you in fact, you do, you make a capital investment, you haven't put money into a position that then somebody else is going to have to pay for when the, you know, two-year grant is over. Um, so I, I do think that, you know, 95% of, of what we put ARPA funds into are, are, uh, one-time investments that, you know, there will be, that there will not be a need for someone else to backfill, you know, paying a person, you know, paying for a position after it's, after it's done. I mean, you build it, you helped build a childcare center, obviously that has to operate. But like, we didn't, we didn't put in, we didn't put in personnel dollars necessarily. Um, you know, there was, that even the, the workforce investments we made in, in childcare were, were more like training, you know, internships and things like that. So you get someone prepared to be a childcare worker, um, but then, you know, somebody else has to actually offer them a job.
I would, and I would agree with that. A lot of the proposals came with a detailed line item budget and, you know, a five-year plan going forward. So even the capital proposals that we funded, um, a lot of their operating expenses were not covered through ARPA, whereas ARPA would cover the construction of the building or the warehouse, you know, for more food assistance. Um, and then Neighborhood Impact or whoever we allocated dollars to would come with the operational plan.
So the, of the unspent ARPA funds, where, where are those being held?
Uh, those are in the bound, 400, there's only, there's $400,000 remaining in ARPA funding, and those on here are.
That's unallocated.
Unallocated.
So, so well, so where's that being held?
It's in Fund 200.
Fund 200. Of the already allocated but unspent, that's all handed somewhere and that's not something that the county holds?
No, we, we hold it in Fund 200. It's just budgeted in different areas in Fund 200. Um, and so, um, a lot of these contracts are reimbursable, which is again, is why that orange doll, or that orange bar isn't maxed out to the blue bar yet, because we give it as we get invoices and as we get project updates and things like that. So, um, we use project funding in ARPA and have it for each one of these categories, each one of our sub recipients.
Okay. Thank you. That answered my question.
Yeah, and if you need more detailed information on that, Jim, we're happy to, to look into that for you.
And Dan, can you remind us what the drop dead date is for expenditure? And Dan, can you remind us what the drop dead date is for expenditure of these ARPA funds? I mean, if you've committed them, they're good until 2026, is it?
Yeah, I think, yeah, December 26th, but the project needs to be, you know, done. And we need to have spent the funds by that point. And then we need to have obligated them, I believe, by December of 2024. Robert is also the former ARPA officer, Lane, so he knows a lot of these, too.
So if they're unspent by 2026, but you have to obligate them by 2024, and a project doesn't happen, and you retain those funds, do you have to return them to the federal government? Is that what, or can you reallocate them to another project?
I mean, I don't think we, we know yet. I don't think the federal government or the treasury's gone that far ahead. Of course, that's something that is written in there, that that could be, that could, there could certainly be a clawback if funds aren't expended properly, or if we haven't used all the funds, if that would actually happen. I don't know. But I think that's what the main mission, again, is for our ARPA team this year, now that we've allocated everything, is to be reaching out to them and be working with each one of those sub recipients to make sure that we're moving forward and that the project is viable. Otherwise, we'll bring those conversations to the board.
If, if a specific project isn't going to move forward, you know, I'm thinking of some of the housing investments we made, you know, maybe some of the childcare investments we made. If that specific project in that specific proposed place is not going to move, move forward, will we be able to roll over the funds into a like investment that would have until 2026? It's like, this childcare is not going to work, but, you know, this other idea has come up, so we can just kind of shift these funds over? Or, you know?
So that's not something we've, we've run into yet. But as we check, that certainly, that could be a possibility, especially with some of the inflation and, like we said, supply chain demand. And if we do that, I imagine the funds would be freed, and they'd be freed for, for any category. The board has sole discretionary funding power for, for ARPA. So you could choose to put it back into homeless, or you could choose to put it into one of the other eligible categories.
But if we figure that out before December 2024, then we could, we could just reallocate it.
Yes.
In a new contract, anyway.
Exactly. Yeah, we would reallocate it in a new contract, and then that contract would go forward and have the actual expenditure.
Let's make sure we have that conversation at least six months before that drop.
Yes, we're, we're starting, now that we've allocated everything, we're starting to have conversations and make continual calls and check in with our contacts for each one of those sub recipients, that, especially the ones that aren't spending anything at this point in time.
Thank you.
Mine are knit, but there's a, you know, there's a reasonable amount of money sitting in Fund 200 that's collecting interest, and collecting interest actually means something these days. Where does the interest money go? Does it, does it get reallocated in ARPA? Does it get refunded somewhere else?
Good question. So all cash in investment, all cash is pooled at the county, and so all of it's invested in shared investments. And the new treasurer will have an oversight of that as well, potentially. So any interest earnings in the pool are then allocated within that fund. So they get that revenue goes back into Fund 200. So then those earnings are also available then for any additional projects. You know, as it adds up over time, we can see what that amount adds up to be, but we can use those funds. Actually, this is one where the treasury did say you can funnel that back into ARPA programs, or that can also be used as a general fund of the county. There aren't any strings attached to the interest earned within the ARPA program.
It says $242,000 for the share projected for interest. With a variance by it, because I'm sure that's because income is higher than it was originally done.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're making money again, right, on our.
All right. I'm cognizant that it's almost lunchtime. This is the last slide on, on the actuals, though. And so let's just go through this, and then, and then we have on air, take a working lunch, but maybe we take a 15-minute break and then kind of do a working lunch. Would that be amenable to you, Bruce? All right, so CDD development revenues, 8.9% year average increase since 2017, which makes sense when we think about the growth that we've had. We did talk to the CDD department, Sherry Penner. As of right now, it sounds like the best estimate they have is a 1.7% estimated reduction in FY '23 due to application volume decrease. And didn't hear any indicators that fiscally year '24 may reverse that kind of slight downtrend. So that's where we are with development revenues, and we look at that, you know, as it's a general marker for the housing economy and, and actual assessed value and whatnot. Do you have anything that you wanted to add to that, Nick?
I'll just acknowledge, I mean, this really shows a trend here. So remember, 2003, '04, '05, it was up, up, up. It was like, look out. And 2006 and '07, and 2010, '11, those were hard times. That was recession. That was a big bubble. And look how, how much higher it is, though, in '21, '22. That's the amazing part here, thinking the development activity, the, you know, total, just number of houses, number of, you know, permits, everything that went up there. So we've really hit a new level of throughput in the whole organization. And I'm just thinking, yeah, back, Nick, I mean, this is, I wonder what it looked like, you know? If, if we had a chart like this, you know, 10 and 20 years before that, there was nothing like this kind of volume at the time, ever.
Yeah, it's very significant. Two other activities did occur in 2015, 2016, and that is that we coordinated with the City of Sisters, and the City of Sisters transferred their building program to us. So that, that is included, not their planning or anything else, but their building program. And the pine took off. I mean, both, both small cities that we have building jurisdiction in just exploded, and that also contributed to the development activity.
Well, and those are two little towns where you think, oh, it's, you know, 1,200 people, it's 1,500 people. But no, it's 3,000. Exactly, that's my point. It's going up. No, it's 3,000 people. It's going to be 5,000 people.
1,500, it seems like.
Yeah, so that's my point, exactly. You know, those little sleepy towns you think of as 2,000 aren't that anymore either.
It's projected to be 1.4 million down in total revenue for CDD for the year.
What's, what's interesting to me on this is it looks like building, because I would expect normally building would be the leading indicator on this, and yet you're seeing other permitting stuff starting to drop off while building continues to rise. That's a, that's just, that's, that seems an anomaly.
Well, so, yeah, sometimes you see the.
Didn't they change the valuations, though? When did they do that?
Building did, yeah, a couple of years ago.
Yeah, so.
Oh, their fee.
Planning's had a couple of big, there was a big deal with this whole lot of record application for a couple of years, and that took off. And there was this marijuana applications took off. And then over the last couple of years, there's been a lot of plan amendment, zone changes that have taken off. So there's been all of these that, not all have been sustained, but they've all contributed to the significant increase.
Okay. Well, it looks like lunch just came. If there's no other comments, then maybe we adjourn for lunch.
All right. What can I say?
Let's go ahead and take a 15-minute break. You can grab your lunch during that time, get back together and restart.
Just want to thank Cafe ninety-seven, they did a lovely job on our lunch today, the turkey and ham and veggie sandwiches. Thank you, Summer, and thank you Cafe ninety-seven. Moving on to the fiscal year twenty-four budget assumptions. So first off, assessed value increase, based on some of those lower permitting numbers and some economic indicators. We're, after talking with our assessor, we're assuming a slight decrease in maybe the assessed value growth there to five point four five percent. Again, the average since two thousand and fourteen, and actually, when we came in here at two thousand and twenty-three was five point five. Slight decrease to five point four five.
Now, is that a number published by the assessor's office?
The assessor's office won't publish their number until sometime in January.
Oh, January.
Yeah.
But that's our starting point.
That's our starting point at this time.
So what's that mean in real dollars approximately?
I can get you that information, but I'd have to look, because it would be, it would be that, in terms of our actual property tax collection, it would be that multiplied by our ninety-six percent tax collection rate, which is what we're assuming this year.
So just roughly in order or magnitude, how many easy euros?
Oh, I think it's probably around thirty-five million.
Okay.
Okay, moving forward. So the cost of living adjustment is to be determined for fiscal year twenty-four, but it's based on a, in general, it's based on a twelve-month average as of January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. And right now, October to October, it's seven point seven percent. Our labor contracts range from one percent, you know, minimum to four percent maximum. And we do have three labor contracts set to expire in June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three, so we will be doing labor negotiations kind of through the budget season as well with those three contracts. Okay, so our PERS outlook, this graph's a, it's a biennial rate cycle for the PERS. Our current two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three rates, excuse me, are in effect through this fiscal year. Our two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-five rates increased an average of one point six percent, which is really good. That's a great PERS number. We were anticipating that number, and we've been planning for that, but very happy that it was at one point six percent. Moving forward, so fiscal year twenty-four is the first year of the new biennial rate. As I said, the county has expected this PERS increase and planned accordingly. The increased rates will have an estimated one point seven five million dollar impact on fiscal year twenty-four personnel budget there. The rates below include the pickup of six percent and debt service of one and a half percent. Are there any questions related to PERS? All right. Moving forward to the general fund forecast.
So just a half a second, I'm PERS still. So in years past, PERS was just this great unknown. It's like, oh, it's going to be bad, oh, we don't know how bad it's going to be. So it looks like we're just kind of in a stable period where, you know, just maybe Robert can feel for this. You know, one point six or whatever in two percent numbers, it's digestible.
Yeah, the year, these, the rates for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-five are based on the returns through two thousand and twenty-one, which were favorable at that time. So it helped smooth the rates, and then also with some of the other changes they made on the edges at PERS. So it helped minimize costs, like the rate collaring and how they apply credits in other years. So they made some few changes, so that did help us in this year. There are still unknowns in out-years, PERS is still, overall, the system is going to continue to go up unfunded until, and then in the out-years, then they'll, will be more in line with a funded balance. But we're still favorable at this point.
There's also the PERS reserve and being able to make that one-time investment and getting some money from this state of Oregon, that match, that was a huge help.
And that's where you're, sorry, reflecting on that. There's a two point nine nine percent rate credit that reduced our rate because of the site accounts and the match that we had. So that helped offset some of the increases exactly.
Are you seeing a predictable trend in terms of change of the, some of the rates, you know, in terms of retirement of tier ones, other things like that, that would other, that also are going to generally affect your rate and contribution needs?
Yeah, tier one, tier two definitely is decreasing, and the OPSERP level, of course, as the long-term employees that tend to be tier one or tier two retire, or then the new hires are typically in the OPSERP program.
And I, and I think also in this timeframe, there's going to be an expiration of the, I know it affects a minimal number of departments, but there's going to be an expiration in the state law around refunding a PERS for retired employees. Is that going to make any substantial change?
Refunding a PERS or allowing a PERS employee to continue to work.
So for, so for, there was a state law, and I'm, I'm getting too much into details, I can ask you offline.
I think that's what maybe Eric referred to. There was a match from our PERS reserve matched by the state, which put in a big chunk of money, which bought down the whole system. So that happened a year or two ago, and it's just on the books now.
There, there was a law for a while ago that you could actually hire a retiree back beyond the minimal number of, beyond the minimal time. But then you had to collect purse from them again and put it back in the system, and I know that that's, well, we think that might expire.
Yeah, there was an end date, at the time they passed the bill.
Yeah. I'd say, I know it's coming up, I just didn't know whether that was, that was a factor. It sounds like you haven't really, justifiably, it sounds like you haven't really thought about it.
We would see a projection going out in years, and there were some pretty honest. That showed nasty things happening in years forward, and we have a PERS reserve account to help offset that. Is all that mechanism still in place, or are we, are we doing something different?
Well, the PERS reserve was used to buy down the rate, and there was a match from the state, so that's, that's how that was applied.
Right.
I mean, it was a great way to leverage.
Yeah, we did decide to, you know, reduce that, but we were still charging to the departments at some level that had to do that reserve. And I'm just wondering how all that mechanism is functioning at this point. Are we still, you know, what is the rate that we're using, and how does that affect us in the future?
I think we'd have to look into C, I don't believe that we're charging departments. Cam's saying definitely not charging departments, so at this point for the, for the PERS reserve, so. But perhaps we could get a farther future look, you know, it's hard because of the biennial rates, but if, you know, if we have any future looks for PERS, we could look at that and see if perhaps we need to make some corrective action ahead of time again.
Well, I'd be curious if we went back to a year or two ago when Wayne prepared some graphs that showed us what we need to be prepared for. If we could just get a review of that to say, here's where we actually ended up, if that'd be helpful.
We can, we can definitely do that.
Thank you.
All right, general fund forecast. So the general fund property tax rate, right now, the assumption is to, you know, increase six cents and levy the permanent rate of one dollar point two seven eight three cents for one thousand dollars of assessed value. Just a sub-note, this has not been discussed with the B O C C as a full board and committee in a meeting here. But this would support vital operations at the current level, and really, it's, it's, it's necessary for courthouse debt service, especially if we have any future capital plan needs in addition to that courthouse. But for the courthouse alone, it would be necessary to service that debt at this point in time.
So I'll acknowledge, yeah, we're not voting on that now as a budget committee, but there was a three to three vote last year, remember? It was just that close. It was wonderful that we were able to transfer that three and a half million from TRT, unallocated TRT, to really, you know, make our books balanced last year. I am supportive of going into this budget process with this amount fully assessed at this time. And we just saw that, you know, the health, health benefits, you know, reserve is dropping a lot, so that means if we have to just add a little bit of, you know, internal charges across the organization, it'll add up fast. So I'm supportive of proceeding with, you know, this at this time as an assumption into the budget process.
And I did vote last time, I mean, inflation has changed, and so there's concerns about that, but seeing the health of the capital reserve fund, I think, yeah, it's important discussion to have.
And, you know, man on the street view, running for office, I've had a few people call me, Commissioner, you said you're holding on, you're holding on to my rates, and my tax bill went up. It's like, well, we're, we're working on, you know, keeping it down, but the whole system, especially the library bond and the school bonds and all the other things that show up on the, the tax bill, really accelerate, you know, the cost of our tax bill. But, I mean, the Schuets County is just a, just a happy, healthy level of government that's been able to live within its means, do capital as we proceed, which is exciting, instead of the big bonds. And, you know, there may be a discussion out there someday, but, you know, it's just, the tax bills still go up, no matter what we do, it seems like.
The significance of this point's, the six cents to, I assume, most of us here are individual homeowners, is, is not very big either. I mean, for, for me, I would have paid the twelve or thirteen bucks more per year, every year, for, for us to be arriving at this moment with, you know, ten million dollars more in our capital reserve than we, than we have now. So I, on principle, I, you know, I think there's a really, it's really important to make commitments to the taxpayers to try to constrain the growth of their tax bill. But this particular item is really not so significant.
And maybe there's other ways we can help. I know that with inflation and the cost of living, it's hard on people of limited means, and I know there's a veterans program that helps reduce the property tax for veterans. And maybe we can do that for seniors of limited means, if the county would consider something like that to help those who really can't afford this bump. I think it's worth taking a look at what the financial impact would be on the county to implement some kind of program like that.
I think that would be legislative, I don't know that we have that authority.
Usually, there's a bill every year that it never seems to get anywhere.
Usually there's a bill every year that it never seems to get anywhere.
That'd be the state legislature.
I mean, as far as for the veterans, major reduction of their property taxes, I don't know why it doesn't get anywhere, but it doesn't.
All right.
It would be good to have those numbers available when we talk about this. What is the impact? What are the dollars that we're going to get and so on?
It's just slightly, yeah, we'll, we'll provide that definitely for budget week and the overall. It's, it's just slightly under $2 million would be that six cents raise year over year.
Yeah, I think last year, some of the discussions centered around, you know, we factored without that and the numbers looked pretty good. If you're, you know, you're calling your shot here, saying you're going to come in and, and predict that and then see, see where we need to go. It would be, it would at least be good to see where those numbers are going to be spent. And I'll go back to the intentionality of it. I mean, if you're getting that much extra money, how are you making sure that you're being intentional with how you're spending it?
Yeah. And I would say the difference between, you know, this year's budget and last year's budget is, is the courthouse. That's, that's the amount. Last year, you know, we had just started figuring out that the estimate, the initial estimate was not going to be accurate. And, and we're looking at a $44.5 million courthouse. We have about 5.5 million in our capital reserve. And so, you know, the, the options for paying for it are increasing general fund and, and increasing unallocated TRT because of the, we'll get to it, but the 20-year, the annual payment will be at least 3.6, you know, if we locked in a million a year. Plus on top of that, we have our other capital needs that the capital reserve usually covers. And so that's, that's part of this presentation going forward.
I'm staying quiet until you get there, but trust me, I have a few things to say.
Good, good.
Bruce was asking about, you know, kind of being able to show people numbers. I, the, the calculation I just did for you, like, you know, my, the assessed value of my house, you know, times 0.6 cents, you know, 12, 13 bucks, I think it would be helpful to show people. If you have a house that, that your assessed value is 500,000, this is how much more you'll be paying, you know, 800,000, this is how much more you'll be paying, just to give people a feel that, that the impact on their pocketbook is not so big.
We did that with pretty good success with the Senator Bond.
Yeah, yeah.
We can definitely do that for either prior to budget week or budget week.
That'd be great.
The other thing for this discussion, so we have a full pocketbook, we'll look at the options. And what, how else can we get those funds rather than just increasing tax base? What's our, what are their options before us? So we can make a good decision.
Sure. In the Oregon Business Plan Conference yesterday, Commissioner Chang and our group there in the building in Portland, the budget tri-chair, Senator Steiner, she said that, you know, they've been, they've been budgeting for many years. They're trying to take a long-term forecast view these days and they have good reserves or, or, you know, they have, they have money to work with. So going into this session, so that's at the state level. So that's good to know. So my point is, I don't feel bad about asking, well, we've got a capital need, you know, here we go. And I was also able to see Chief Justice Walters yesterday at the reception. And I mentioned to her, you know, there may be a capital ask for courthouse. And she's like, well, I, I was so happy to get you those two judges and I thought you weren't going to ask. And I mentioned, well, inflation. I just said the word inflation. She's like, oh, yeah, okay. You know, so she understood. But I mean, and she's retiring, but I mean, at least I was able to mention it to her and, you know, understand that's going on. Because it really did. I mean, I always thought of it as a 20-something million dollar commitment. And now it's 40-something million dollars and it just jumped, it jumped on us. So.
And it's really, you know, it's 72 million plus over 20 years.
Oh, yeah, with debt. Yeah, exactly. So, yeah, anything, yeah, 72, where'd that come from? But, yeah.
5% interest.
Yeah, I know. I just took it. Yeah. I won't feel ashamed asking for the, you know, the legislative process about some capital.
I think, you know, that's obviously the hope is that we get capital dollars from the state or something like that. But absent that, this is what we're, you know, kind of planning the budget around. So we are projecting a 96% tax collection rate consistent with prior years. And I think Bruce and Jim, as we go through this, we'll have more detailed numbers and I welcome any questions there. I think for the proposed budget, we're talking about general fund transfers to departments, inflationary increase for personnel. But general fund transfers being looked at on an individual basis, being evaluated, you know, for, for each department's need, et cetera.
So, I mean, you, we talked about it a little bit earlier. I was going to ask if you'd forecasted any vacancy rates or anything in the, in the general fund forecast that you do. And we've got it, I think you answered my question earlier because there's generally offsets that don't, that don't appear to make the vacancy rates all that important. Is that generally true or was that just true from last year or this year?
This is true from the last couple of years. We've seen some decline in clerks revenue, which is kind of the main source besides property taxes. And that's kind of offset the vacancy savings. But we wouldn't expect to see that forever. And that's just because the loan origination amounts are down.
Okay.
Recording revenues. So moving forward, we kind of have a graph here of the impact of levying the full tax rate. And we'll start with the graph on the left. And this graph is the general fund transfer out to reserve. So again, just to remind folks, that's the general fund amount over our four-month contingency that we hold in the general fund policy and we transfer it out to reserve. And that is used for all debt and capital. And then the red line here is our estimated minimum debt plus capital maintenance expenditures going forward. So typically, we've been blessed to be able to have this blue line, which is our general fund transfer out to reserves, cover in cash all of our estimated capital maintenance needs. We haven't typically held debt in that fund. But currently you can see at, at a minimum, we're estimating that to be around 5.6 and increasing at some inflationary rate. 3.6 million of that is the, you know, kind of minimum payment that we're looking at right now for a $44.5 million courthouse. And then an additional 2 million is coming from a capital plan and then future capital needs, as well as really an increase in capital maintenance as our services expand, our buildings get older. We do have a need to subsidize more general fund dollars into our capital maintenance fund, which is usually funded by three cents of property tax. So, so that's the graph on the left. And that's kind of the gap. And, and it's a pretty substantial graph, especially when you consider it year over year over year, those numbers kind of summing. The graph on the right is the general fund transfer out to reserve versus debt and capital expenditures with the 6% increase. So you can see that the, the line on the right stays the same. The, the axes are a little shrunk there. But the line on the right stays the same because it's the same estimated capital maintenance expenditures. But the blue line increases by that $2 million amount plus, you know, increase in property tax year over year over year. Now, we still, in the end, in FY '30, in the out years there, those numbers still cross. And that's why we're going to need TRT and we'll probably need TRT. But we will need TRT before then, unallocated TRT to cover these costs as well. Are there any questions on this graphic?
So I know, I know you said that TRT is difficult to predict, but have you, have you built a model with some type of TRT curve without a tax increase where you can, where you can generally allocate a set, allocate a set amount of the unallocated and put it in there to, to see whether the graphs look any better?
Yeah. So we've been working on a model for six or seven months now. And there, there really isn't a model where TRT itself, unless TRT was to continue to grow at the astronomical rate, you know, through the 20 years of debt, that we would be able to, to cover the costs with, with just TRT at this point in time. Unless you were to also take other, other actions too, like, you know, slow, slow down growth, not, not freeze or anything like that, but slow the growth curve. Because at the same time, we have an operational curve.
Right.
That's eating into this general fund access every year. So those are kind of the, not to get into too nitty gritty of it, but, you know, you guys are asking for those technical questions. We haven't built out a TRT model yet that, that has that. So that's kind of why later on, we'll be talking about TRT assumptions in the budget and things of those nature for the unallocated TRT.
I think we need to do some possibility thinking in terms of where are some of the different ways that we could do that? Or what are the additive results of doing an increase plus, plus expecting increased TRT? Just to, just to track and, and, you know, you don't need to do 20 permutations, but it really helps to understand where some of your additive, additive pieces are going to come in so that you're, so that you're not assuming that it's an either or scenario in any of these cases.
I'll just add one thing that, and Dan alluded to this earlier in the presentation, but the forecast model that we have goes out through 2048. And when we put forth this budget assumption presentation, it's a result of, now that we have a, the board has made a decision, we're going to move forward with a courthouse and we have this funding obligation and the priorities. So let's, how do we build in our budget? How do we, with the, with the debt service that we anticipate, what assumptions do we need to move forward with to make the budget in the current year, but also in future years? Because every decision we make today will have a financial impact on the out years, right? So we, we want to be mindful of the decisions we're making today so it doesn't hinder or hurt, but it also helps in the out years to come. So that's the purpose of the projection out to 2048. So when we looked at those projections, we looked at it without it, the six cent increase at all. We looked at it without a TRT contribution, right? And, and we weren't able to do that with increasing costs as well. So the assumptions that we have this year does include, as, as mentioned, the six cent and a TRT contribution, which is open obviously for discussion as well. But that's what, that's the combination that we did find, that we were able to have the curve in the out year still be positive. There's still a point where revenues exceed expenses and Dan alluded to that too, but those are in out years. And one other thing, assumption in the assumptions, is we did not build in any contribution from the state. That is an unknown at this point. If the state comes forward with a small or large contribution towards the courthouse, that would impact the amount of debt service we would have to, we would go out to borrow. And so that would lower our payments there. So, so that would factor in at a later time. We don't have that at this point as well.
What about the 1.5 million you, you mentioned in here from the OJD? Is that already determined? Is that given?
So we, we talk about the local assistance tribal, the Wackif ARPA funds, which is 4.6 and then the OJD funds. And I think, you know, the, the hope is to put those in the, into the capital reserve to help pay down that debt. And so that would also increase that blue line that's not showing on the blue line right now. The blue line right now is just showing the general fund increase. But no matter how we, we work it, it's a sensitivity analysis. But no matter how you work it, you have to do some general fund increase, really the full general fund increase and have TRT. Unless your TRT assumptions are, that we just keep growing at, at the same rate, you know, which has been like, you know, from 11 million to 13 million to 14 million. It kind of isn't, it, it would take both of those at this point in time. And, you know, I don't, we don't have that model in front of us to go over all the details. It's a massive model. But we certainly can provide you with more details if needed at this point. But as Robert says, if you were to get a large contribution from the state in a lot of these conversations, then, you know, this isn't the budget conversation anymore, perhaps.
I want to ask about the assumptions about interest rates for the $40 million that we're going to borrow. I had, a long time ago, when, you know, I was discussing this with Greg Munn, you know, he said, well, you, you, and, and I was arguing with him about whether, when we needed, when we needed to dial up the assessed property tax rate. And he said, well, you just borrow the money that you need to borrow at the rates that are available. And then later on, you're going to have access to lower rates and you can essentially refinance that debt. I mean, do we have, you know, in, in the models that you've done, are there any, are there any assumptions about rates dropping in the future and being able to refinance? Or did you assume a, a certain rate and just kind of carry that through the, the life of the loan?
Right. Commissioner Chang, great question. So we did work with our municipal financial advisor on this. We just don't, you know, determine the rates ourselves, but we sought their opinion on that. So the rate with the assumption is a 5.75 interest rate. That, that does include, it's a conservative rate and that assumes the interest rates will continue to increase until we get to the time to issue a bond. Now, at the time of when we received that quote, the feds were increasing rates at 75 basis points each, basically each time they met. Now, well, we'll see tomorrow, but we're anticipating a 50 basis point increase. So maybe the, the, the rate of increase will slow. So it may not be at the 5%. But that, but we do need a budget at that point or consider that as adoption at this point, hoping that it would be less. And whenever you go out for a bond, when I've worked with other municipal advisors, they always do give you a rate that is higher than what you think you may close at, given the market, but it's on the margins. It's still going to be over $3 million in debt, right, each year. Regarding refunding, bonds are typically, this would be a 20-year bond. At the 10-year mark, you can refund bonds at that time. There is a possibility of advanced refunding. There are no longer tax-exempt advanced refunding. That law changed. But essentially now at the 10-year mark, we, if rates are more favorable, we could refinance there. That's also part of our thinking and reasoning is if we don't need to go out for a bond for the full $44.5 million, if we can buy down that debt at some point, either from additional funding from the state or if there's one-time funds that we've received to Commissioner Adair's comment regarding the OJD or the additional ARPA funds, then those are funds that we can buy down the debt and save in the interest costs, which would free up other funds in the long term over the 20 years. So those are also the additional things that we're looking at as well. Great question.
And so in your models, at the 10-year mark, what was, what did you assume?
At the 10-year mark, it still assumes a continued payment until, because we definitely know for those 10 years, we'd be committed to a debt service payment. And that's the thing is each year, as we make budget decisions, this is the value of a long-range forecast, right, is you can update your forecast as you go to the most recent assumptions. And once we know with clarity on those assumptions, we'll update the model and see how it changes the numbers in the out years.
You know, and my, my only comment's going to be, because you have to do that because that's the, that's the term of your payments and, and the exposure that you're, that you're risking, a lot changes in five years. And all you have to do is look back to 2017 and then back again to 2012 and realize the different states of the county and some of the things that were going on and the decisions that, that would change on that. So I'd really encourage some study of what's going on over the next five years and what are some of the, you know, again, if you get, if you get a high and a low guard rail on there, you know that the answer's going to be somewhere in the middle. And that at least gives you an understanding of some of the, some of the different permutations that you can have. Because you're putting, we're, we're, a lot of this is really assuming that we're going to cover all this in budget rather than trying to float a sunsettable bond as a vote or, or something like that. And, you know, again, that's the, that's the discretion of the county, not necessarily of the budget committee. But I think you really want to look at what's the, what are the potentials that are going to go out to 27 or 28 so that you can understand what kind of hole that you might be digging for yourself outside of just having to pay for some massive spending, building projects.
And I should, I should also, as you in that massive building projects, the model that we're talking about doesn't include any massive building projects. So we will talk about future capital planning needs. This only includes capital maintenance expenditures with inflation out for 20 years plus the courthouse debt and the next two or three years of our capital plan, which is pretty minor since most of the capital plan is being done this fiscal year.
So it's really just one massive building project rather than assuming others?
Exactly. Yeah. So, but, but that being said, like, as we go further in this presentation, there is, there are still, our, I think I heard our FTE needs are growing faster than our capital. Our capital's lagging behind, so there is still a need for capital. So what I think I'm trying to get to is that the model has extremely conservative expenditure built into it, as it should. built into it, as it should. And so we have have the ability in that model to adjust general fund rates, TRT rates, TRT projections, and just about anything else. And as we've done that, barring a large infusion of funds from somewhere else, you know, these are the these are kind of the what we think are the prudent options at this point in time.
Okay.
But obviously, anything can change over time.
Is there any official effort underway or specific request to the state legislature regarding the capital project, the courthouse? Have you started that process?
It's generally in our list of asks that we're working with our lobbyist, Doug Riggs, and Northwest Policy Advocacy. So, yeah, it'll be in the in queue and it'll come up in different versions and different asks, but it's been mentioned.
Senator Finley has already promised, but he hasn't given me a number. So, you know, he knows he knows we'd like some millions.
All right, going forward, kind of along the same vein here is the capital reserve forecast. Remember, the capital reserve is the fund that is is going to be paying for the debt and the minimal capital maintenance going forward. And this is kind of our forecast. This reserve level does not include new capital projects. It does include the six cents increase, though. The operating expenses do kind of eat into our general fund transfer year over year, that 4% growth that we're talking about. It's not all the time that our general fund revenue, including our property taxes, will grow at at the same pace as our kind of personnel and operating costs within general fund. And so over time, without an infusion of TRT, our capital reserve declines as our general fund transfer to the capital reserve declines essentially here, which is kind of the point as to why we would need TRT contributions for future debt. So this is kind of a slide that we have in our model that looks at the six cent increase and what would happen really after 13 years, you know, of minimum capital maintenance and debt payments, but not including new capital without TRT infusion. So that's why we feel like, you know, TRT contributions are are necessary at this this point in time.
So this this curve is assuming no TRT contribution?
That's correct. So I'll I'll check on that, but I believe that's that's correct. And I think it's I believe that is correct. And I believe that if you go back to the impact of levying the full rate, you have to realize that at minimum, 13 years later, you're looking at somewhere in the ballpark of $7 million-ish between the 3.6 and what is now, you know, inflation increase capital maintenance needs needing, you know, year over year.
That's not a good slide.
Well, and I just want to say like
Don't go negative.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, we just have a lookout.
Always looking at the positive.
It may be a trajectory, but it's not negative.
You know, we we spend a lot of our dollars in the capital reserve fund doing doing other campus improvements over the last four or five years with cash, which was which was great that we had the ability to do that. Yeah. But now we do have a, you know, the courthouse is a really large project where we don't have identified funding. And we only have this 5.5 million in general capital reserve. And generally speaking, we only have about 4 million coming over, 4.9 million in general fund transfer every year and less and less as operations grow. So, you know, we kind of got to have to get creative. It's not the end of the world. But that's, I think, why we're presenting it now is so that we can start coming up with some solutions for for how to pay for the courthouse and things.
Dan, just to clarify, this capital reserve forecast doesn't include any new capital projects outside of the courthouse?
That's correct.
And ongoing capex maintenance?
Mm-hmm.
How long of a timeline do you typically have for future capital projects? What does that look like, your forecast for other projects on the horizon that you think are going to be needed, but you haven't actually budgeted yet?
I mean, we have we in the past, we've got a five-year capital plan that's kind of a mix of admin and finance meeting with facilities who does the capital plan. But it's it's a extensive project, you know, process until it gets going. I don't know if Nick or Whitney can speak to more the timeline or Eric for each capital project.
Yeah, there's a couple of different different avenues. One is is looking at like master plans. So the public safety master plan is identifying future needs. And then as that gets refined, then there's cost estimates. So that's kind of real long term. And then separately, the facilities department has gone through our existing buildings and done assessments. And they look out 20 years to see what needs to be replaced and when. And then that also helps smooth out the capital maintenance budget so that we're replacing, you know, one roof at a time rather than four roofs in in one year. And that helps smoothes out smoothes out that cost.
And one thing we our facilities director always says about when we increase FTE is that we really should not just think of it as the cost of an FTE, but some small capital amount on top of it, too, because for space needs and things like that. So, yeah, so we're just trying to bring this to your attention to kind of look at our TRT assumptions and our general fund assumptions because that's where kind of free cash flow is to pay for these things.
And and observation would be part of, you know, part of the reason there's I see two big factors that that, you know, make this curve look so depressing. One is that the county has been taking some responsibility to, you know, fund tomorrow's projects with today's dollars. And you can argue over the wisdom of that from a government entity, but from a financial standpoint, it actually makes a fair amount of sense. The other aspect of it is that we didn't necessarily anticipate that the courthouse was going to be as extensive as it was. And that's what and and again, that would that's what makes us go scrambling around for the cyanide pills on this.
Right.
So what of the other capital projects? I think we I think there needs to be an assumption or an assumption, at least on the county's part, and I think it might be some responsibility of the budget committee is what are some of the future significant capital requests that are coming in? And what are the options to figure out how to fund those? I mean, and the example that I'll give is when you look at the future landfill that we need to do, there's been a tremendous amount of money that's being pumped into that today in anticipation of or knowing that you're going to have to go do that upgrade tomorrow. Where else do we need to be responsibly sourcing dollars to be able to not get five more of these landing on top?
Well, when you talk about the NAGAS transfer station, you know, solid waste, that was that was $21 million, which was kind of close to the original courthouse estimate, which would have been totally doable. I think their annual payment is about 1.8 million a year or so. But also solid waste can
I'm just talking, you know, the next landfill. I mean, there's there's already a significant amount of money that, as I can recall, there's already a significant amount of money that's going into shutting down the existing landfill eventually and then and then funding the the future landfill. Where else can we do forward-looking things, knowing that there's there's some building necessities that are going to go on?
Lee has a master list. I mean, he doesn't have a master plan, but he has a master list of of capital project needs, facilities needs of, you know, stretching out, I want to say, like, 10 years. And it's all in there. The 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 jail remodel I mentioned, that's in there. I mean, it's it's all in there. And, you know, some of it is, you know, it's just kind of, you know, vague impressionistic, you know, image as opposed to, you know, detailed cost estimate at this point. But but we have we do have we have the information to look forward.
Yeah, it's I mean, experience is telling us at this point that the, you know, it's I won't use the analogy, sorry. The experience would tell us that as you as you get closer to something, you're going to see you're going to see more of the risk, more of the flaws and other things. And this one is just getting presented at us because, you know, honestly, we we missed the need to some degree as a county, or at least the scope of the need until it was until it was presented in front of us. So I think at some point or another, really understanding how that's going to how some of the future building needs are going to affect this so that you can start to pre-sell and pre-save, at least in some areas, really lessens that impact over time. This is this is just the, you know, the bad news.
Well, I think I think the Commissioner Chang point and Robert's point is like, as we get more information, we can update the model and eventually we can tie that in with the capital plan, you know, so we can see what the model does with prioritized capital planning and whatnot with new information, whether we get state legislative funding or nothing. So to give some decision support for for the budget committee and the board.
Yeah, right now, we're treating TRT as Obi-Wan Kenobi. It's our only hope. And we need that in I'm not I'm not saying we shouldn't you shouldn't use the available tool that you have. But but we do need to understand, like you say, it's very unpredictable where TRT is going to go. So we need to understand the inherent risks of saying, well, this might be able to save us. That's just my concern in in this whole conversation, one of my three concerns in this whole conversation.
And transient room tax, there's a, you know, big pie there. And part of it is basically for government purposes, and it's a variable amount. So that's the scary part. But it's okay to use it for the needs of the county.
Yeah, agreed.
So it's not a bad thing. It's just how do we allocate it?
Yeah.
And it's variable. And
And that's also
Go ahead.
That's also why staff is recommending the increase, the six cents of the property tax rate is is because of the variability of of the TRT. There's a little bit of
Christian. We have a slide coming up in two or three slides where we begin to identify some of these some of these forthcoming capital projects. We'll just highlight a couple of those. But certainly, that's not going to be all going forward. As a growing county with growing staff, we're not all going to be able to work remotely, of course. And there's there's going to be a need for further expansions. One of the challenges we've honestly had over the past year in our facilities department has been the impact of the great resignation. We've lost some really, really key people in that department, which has limited, I mean, Lee's working seems like two to three jobs all the time on all these different projects. He's managing the P and P expansion, the courthouse expansion project, the public facility campus plan area. I mean, one of the things we would all like to be doing is doing a master plan for this entire campus right here, not just the courthouse. So there's a lot of work that that we need to do. And there's there are unfortunately, a lot of unknowns at this point about what our expansion needs are going to be and what those associated costs will be.
Yeah, there's a lot of unknowns going forward right now. We've seen the increase in interest rates and then the we see these growth curves and how extreme they are. That's five years ago. We couldn't envision that. So I think today is today, and we have to evaluate it for what it's worth and do what we can. But we going out to 19 or 2038, I mean, that's really fuzzy. So I'm not too worried about that right now.
Yeah.
Fuzzy is a good word, yes.
I like five years, you know, 20 something years.
Yeah. Yeah, it's up for those next
Yeah.
So we do have a, what is it? Capital capital improvement manager in our facilities position open we're recruiting for. And that's the kind of person that will be that that's their job. Look at the big picture, what's coming on the horizon, what are the escalating costs, what's the big capital need? So that's an open position right now.
Yeah. And just a reminder, yeah, we will have we have a slide coming up, as Nick mentioned, on capital constructions or capital projects. We'll talk a little bit more about that. Also, at the during budget week, that we could have a more in-depth discussion from facilities. That would be, you know, more of a deeper dive at that time as opposed to now. Just a reminder, too, what we're looking at here, it's what is funded by the general fund. So talking about solid waste, they have fees that can pay for their own costs. So we're this is also concentrating on projects that the general fund would pay for, which is different than countywide because other funds could pay for their projects, too, which would be a different analysis outside of the funding that we have available for general funded general government sources.
Well, there might be a need to push some future general fund projects to be more funded departmentally and and get the departments thinking about that ahead of time.
All right. All right, so the capital reserve forecast leads us into our TRT assumptions. And I'll talk about the first two and then I'm going to pass it off to Nick for the departmental TRT. So as we've all discussed, TRT is highly variable and difficult to to project. Our FYI 24 TRT projection was $12.5 million approximately. We took a three-year average, which is a pretty simple way of doing it. But also, we realize that it's been super volatile and some of the comments that we're hearing is that it may potentially be decreasing a little bit. So that's our best guess right now as to where it might kind of be offset in fiscal year 24. Obviously, as we get more information, as we get farther along in this fiscal year, we might be able to to update that number for the proposed budget. And then I'll pass it off to Nick for departmental TRT transfer questions for the budget committee consideration in in view of, you know, the capital reserve and and debt funding and future debt funding.
Thanks, Dan. Yeah, the first one is the the general fund or the, excuse me, TRT has subsidized environmental health for the restaurant inspections for quite some time. And it's and I can't remember the exact amount. It's over $400,000 at this point. And so one of our questions we're going to be seeking direction on from the budget committee is do we do we continue to just increase the TRT transfers to keep those as subsidized as they are today? Or do we hold that flat and we begin to increase fees? And I don't know what the magnitude of that is at this point, what what the their increased costs are and what that fee increase might might look like. So that's going to be one question. And then let me get to the big one. And this is Eric mentioned earlier that a couple of years ago, well, if we go in the wayback machine, and Commissioner DeBoeck mentioned it, that TRT was transferred to the to the sheriff's office for the jail at 2.1 million, and then it increased to 2.6 million, and then it increased to 3.1 million. And then a couple of years ago, there was the idea was a $500,000 additional transfer to 3.6 million, which is what Commissioner Adair saw in the little yellow bottom of that of that quadrant of the circle. That was continued last year. And so coming to the to the committee, we wanted to pose the question, what do we assume going forward? What I didn't want to do was to surprise the sheriff with this question. So yesterday, Robert, Dan and I met with the sheriff and the sheriff's leadership team. And it was a robust discussion about the state of of their finances and operations. And the sheriff stated, and I don't have the the details of the data, but he stated that about a third of their operations serve tourists or or as a result or caused by tourists or directly impacted by by tourism. And that equates to about a $5.4 million budget. So not only do they have significant concerns about reducing the 3.6 to back to 3.1, but he stated clearly that they're going to ask for 4.1 million in unallocated TRT this next year. And so I confirmed that I could share that with the budget committee today, and he and his leadership team confirmed that I could. And so I just wanted to give you a sense of of where the sheriff's office is today.
It immediately makes me think about the what I mentioned earlier in this meeting that we, you know, you see it on the next slide, the the public safety campus, you know, big chunk of that, I believe, is or, you know, two slides from now, I believe, is this jail remodel. And I, you know, I don't think that they are looking at that with a viable concept of how they're going to fund that jail remodel right now. So I mean, I we I think we need to be working together, thinking about current needs and that big, you know, maybe now is the time to use the word lump in the snake.
You used it before I did. Go ahead.
That, you know, we we all we know is coming. But we need to be working together now and, you know, looking towards the future to to use TRT, to use the the full assessment rates for the sheriff's office, both districts, to address the the needs that the sheriff's office is going to have in the next few years. And you're trying to, you know, I in some ways, I think it it's better, it would it would be a better play for them to come asking for a significant bump up in TRT when that jail remodel is coming ripe rather than right now. And, you know, I would I would view that, you know, I think that's a good that's a really good reason to ask for a bump up in TRT. And I, you know, right now, if they have if they have, you know, needs that, you know, they did they did rejigger their rates last year a little they, they did, they did rejigger their rates last year a little bit. But if they still have continuing needs to get to full capacity, I, I, I really want them to continue to look at their assessed rates before they ask for a, a big chunk of additional TRT.
What, I mean, this is a microcosm for what we're really discussing here. Is TRT more useful as a, as a capex or an opex solution? The, right now, you know, right now, if they use the Saturday Night Live phrase from a long time ago, it's a floor wax and a dessert topping. So we, you, but I think, I think to some degree, either we need a recommendation from staff in terms of what's the best use operationally, well, I shouldn't, I shouldn't reuse that word. Is it, is TRT better used as capex or opex? And what are, what are the analytics that we would put in that would do that? And then how do you pass that information back to the various departments to determine where it goes? The, the statement that you're coming in with, at least as far as I can tell this today, is right now, it's trending capex. And frankly, I'm, I, I probably support that with the limited information that I have. But it's really down more to, okay, well then, how do you fill up some of the operational holes that you're creating by, by reallocating the unallocated TRT to a capex model?
Yeah. I think you spoke to that well, Jim. And absent, absent, you know, a large infusion of cash from the state and, you know, these, we did our best to budget as we are right now as a county. And looking forward, you know, that's probably well stated.
There's a but coming, but I'm, I'm waiting on a couple more slides.
Well, should we be consistent? I mean, if, if it's, a third of it's TRT, the cost of tourism should pay for itself. If we're going to say, for the inspections for the restaurants, a fee should, you know, cover the cost. I don't know.
Well, it actually seems like our tourists are becoming more impactful because it was a quarter. And I think the traffic court showed it that the quarter of those cases were from tourists. So he's now saying it's up to a third of our problems. I know I used to use a quarter for the courthouse, why we needed more judges than what our population indicated. And then my next question is about the 911. We have that north campus, which is under construction now. It was bought for 4.65 million, and we're up to like $11 million with the remodel in it. But they were never responsible for any portion of the original purchase. Is that standard procedure for the county? I just was wondering, because now they're being allocated, what is it, $611,000 for the remodel of their portion upstairs in one of those buildings. But do they, they're not expected to pay for the original purchase? Never?
In terms of, of expected, or if you, if you go back in history, it's
Right, in history.
It's a, it's a mix. I mean, the current 911 building, the debt services shared by 911 and OSP. Before that, they were in the sheriff's office, and I don't think they paid rent. So it's really been kind of a mixed bag in terms of, if you look, if you look back historically on, on what departments pay for. You know, with that, with that purchase, at the time it was purchased, 911, the 911 going in there came later. That was a decision that was made later.
Which one are you referring to?
I'm sorry, the Kingwood property.
Okay.
When Kingwood was first purchased.
No, I thought they were, they were always part of the conversation from what I knew. When I was touring it, I remember that they were said they could go upstairs.
But I think that decision came after we, we purchased it, or, you know, it was intended for health services and other departments. And then part of that other departments discussion, 911 came to the table. So it's really been a mixed bag if you look back historically. But ultimately, I mean, that's a, a board decision.
Yeah, we're the budget authority for both of those entities.
Right, I know, I know. But I just thought it was kind of inconsistent, that, okay, we bought the building, but now they're going to pay for the remodel, but they're not paying for their portion of the original building, that allocation. So I just was wondering.
Sometimes sunk cost is sunk cost.
What?
Sometimes sunk cost is sunk cost. I mean, you just have to, you have to deal with the decision that was made. And if you want to, if you want to push yourself back to, to go revisit it, for a good reason, you can do that. But a lot of times, that's just, you know.
Well, it wasn't that long ago that we bought this building. It was, what, two years ago or something? It seems like it's taken forever to get it remodeled. So, and it is over 20,000 square feet. And we keep hearing about how we're going to be short on square footage, and yet that's 20,000 square feet. So it is going to be significant, or actually, I think the number's even a bit more than that. So that, that will be coming in the system at some point in time. And then the other question is, how many people are really working remotely and aren't in their office very often? That's another question that we haven't really seen, have we? Because I know there are people that are working significantly remotely.
Well, the parking analysis gave us some data to speak to that, at least for the downtown campus. I don't know for the, the county overall. But, you know, there's places like the Landville and Road Department where not that much work you can do from home. I, I did, I wanted to return to the, this, this argument about, you know, well, a third of the, of the work that the sheriff's office does is tourist-related. And just say that TRT is not the only way that tourism support, financially supports the sheriff's office. You know, a hotel, it pays property taxes for two, the two districts, you know, the two sheriff's districts. A short-term rental, you know, a house that's used basically as a short-term rental, is paying TRT and is paying property taxes. So, you know, you know, I, I, I don't think that you can say, you know, if a third of the, a third of the activity of the sheriff's office is, is tourism-related, that, that means that should be fully covered out of TRT, because to some extent, it's covered out of the property taxes of those hotels and short-term rentals and other, you know, restaurants that are, you know, that, you know, are viable because of tourism, you know, they're paying property taxes too.
Just on the, on the restaurant thing, I know, I know you're throwing it out there because it's a, it's a, it's a what-if, and it's a what-if that you should explore. I think in a, in a vacuum, that's a really hard decision to make, because there's a significant amount of, of risk. And again, I'm looking over at Judy, who probably knows a lot better than I do. There's a significant amount of risk in telling a restaurant that, okay, I'm going to increase this, the fees by this much in any given year, especially, you know, as, as knife-edge as some of those are right now, right?
And I mean, the analysis that Environmental Health did for us, you know, they, they, they did analysis for us that showed the amount of the workload, the case inspection load per, per staff in Environmental Health, it's like higher than any other county in the state.
I remember that from last year.
And our rate structure is, is, you know, more simp, you know, more, you know, less onerous than a lot of other places in the state. So I, I mean, in the long-term, big picture, I think we know that to make that operation function properly, for it to be adequately staffed, so that the, so environmental health personnel can do the inspections to keep people from, you know, suffering from foodborne illness or whatever, that the rates need to go up and they need to staff up a little bit more. That said, you know, through COVID, throughout COVID, I mean, there's been a, you know, a real reluctance to, to, to do that. And I, you know, I'm, I'm sympathetic to that. I did, you know, it's, it's not a great time to, to tell business that really suffered because of the pandemic that, you know, that you're, you're hitting them up with a new fee. So I, yeah, and this, on the question of whether we continue to put money into, into environmental health from TRT for another year or not, like, I'm, I, I could, I could see it either way. But I think we need to, we need to just look at that question, being mindful that it's going to have to come, you know, those, those rate fee increases are going to have to come eventually.
Both of these, you know, both of these discussions are mindful of what's the policy? And, you know, from a Budget Committee perspective, you know, the bright line says that we're approving a budget, the policy is being decided from a, from a county and an administrative aspect. You know, I don't want to, I don't want to throw this back at it, but I think there's a lot more discussion on this and the several other things in terms of, you know, how do we want to allocate dollars? I think we need to, I think we need to be educated on what's the policy and what's the change in policy and how those dollars are being allocated that you're asking the Budget Committee itself to approve.
Just to, you know, bring it back, you know, kind of these considerations are in view of the debt coming up and capital maintenance. And so, right now, you know, we're budgeting $12.5 million in TRT in fiscal year '24. Just so folks know, that would, if the sheriff stayed at, you know, 3.6 and we did the 2 million, well, we're definitely doing the 2 million to Sun River in '24 and '25, that would mean that we'd have approximately, if it came in as budget, about $1.4 million in unallocated TRT going into that capital reserve, which is, you know, just kind of enough to cover that $6 million cost when you think about that on top of a 4.9, 4.8 general fund transfer. And so, really, that's the conversation is, are we reducing unallocated TRT to, to, like, like Jim said, for, for capital and debt needs? Or are we using it for, for operations? So.
Are you looking for kind of more guidance for input to the budget assumptions by these two bullet points at this time?
Well, at some point, we're going to need direction as we begin to build the budget in the next couple of months. What should we assume in terms of, of what the Budget Committee's preference is? Do we want to, we want to think about the 3.1, 3.6, 4.1? We will need that budget, that, that, that direction on what to assume.
So he's saying he wants actually a million now. It was, we, we were doing 500,000 twice, and now he's saying he needs more.
He needs more.
Is he at the top of his levy? He's not, is he?
Not close.
No, he has 12 cents in the rural, I believe, and 23 cents in the urban, or 22 cents, 20 cents in the urban.
Although it's worthwhile to note that the state's imposing a fair amount more costs on the sheriff's office, while sheriff's office is statewide. And that's something that he's probably keeping in mind. I'm just speculating, though.
Well, so I, for myself, I'd be interested in, you know, maybe having a board work session with Environmental Health, you know, just a topic for update and have this kind of tough discussion about what does it look like. So that'd be the board of commissioners doing it. And then, yeah, touch in base individually, like, I'd like to talk to the sheriff and Joe Brundage and, you know, just kind of dream a little bit. So I'd just kind of take them both offline, I guess, for today. But, but no, we need to prepare for them. And we could do it, maybe pairing up with other Budget Committee members if you want to talk to the sheriff or something maybe too.
How come the Rickard Ranch wasn't on the financials for the sheriff before? I know it's like 264,000 for their, their budget expense. I just, hasn't that been around for a long time? Did they separate it out or something?
It just used to be rolled up in a different category, and this year, they broke it out into more detail.
Okay, thank you. That's kind of what I thought. I was thinking it had to be somewhere. Because I know people have been donating for that program for a long time.
Yeah, thank you. And the sheriff did mention that when we met yesterday. That's something that they do take on and that they're, that they're not obligated to do, but they do perform a service.
Get a lot of good public service out of that.
Yeah.
And if the Board of County Commissioners meets with Environmental Health to get an update on how many inspections are happening, how many are not happening, and what's the impact on the restaurants and the increase of fees that they estimate?
Yeah, because then we'll have it all laid out for us.
That way, I think. But I mean, my philosophy is that it should pay for itself. I mean, it's a health and safety issue. And I think it's important to have those inspections done. It's important for the restaurants. Saves them and their liability and, you know, if something were to happen. But I don't know what that looks like. And I don't know if it's going to put overburden on the restaurants.
Well, and I absolutely support having the good capacity, making the, the presence, explaining best practices. Because if you can stay ahead of it, then they're not writing violations for bad situations. It's good situations and people are safe. So it's good to have capacity there also.
I know, my purse fell under the table once at a restaurant, and I had to get it and with my flashlight. And I said, oh, we're never coming back here again. No, really.
Never looking.
It was scary. Yeah, you don't know. I love it when you go to a spotless bathroom.
It's a good idea.
Yes. They've got to do a great job. So it's a good idea if we can meet with Environmental Health sooner rather than later.
That, so.
Get ahead of the game.
Yeah, so, so we can, Commissioners can meet with the sheriff and Environmental Health, and then that way, we will know what number to plug in for our proposed budget. That's great. And so just to finish up the slide, you know, as we've talked about, TRT will be transferred to the County Reserve for Debt Service as a strategy for long-term financial stability.
So back to the, just the big numbers. So TRT as a whole fund is 19 a year, and we think of 12 as the, as the general fund?
TRT as a revenue is about 13.9, we're estimating. 13.9, but we're spending 19 out of there.
We spent 15 last year. There were a couple
Because we had
Big-ticket items.
Yeah, exactly.
I was just trying to remember. So the total annual flow.
Yeah. We don't, the only thing left in the reserve for TRT at this point in time is the payments for Sun River.
So, yeah, that was just an opportunity. We were able to put some money in there. And then, I mean, there's a big choice to partner with Sun River on that. But, and it's interesting, because, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of conversations on the side sometimes about, you know, we'll incorporate if you don't partner with us. So, but I'm happy to, you know, that's going to be an exciting facility that's built there. But it's a big commitment also.
I never heard that threat. I would have
I never heard that either.
I would have held out.
I did. I'll just say, I, I wasn't the one that made the threat, so.
I've heard
At least not this time.
I think incorporation is great.
Intuitive. I mean, it's a good environment. But I mean, if they did incorporate, that whole thing would be under a city council. But, I've just, it's been mentioned to me a few times.
Yeah.
It's going to be great.
Well, I think you've, I think you've thrown it back at it, back at it a couple of times too.
Fine, have at it.
You always could.
Can we take a couple-minute break and then resume for the final slides here?
Oh, sure. Now that I got my 20-yard dash in.
All right. I noticed everybody was kind of heading out.
Did we lose, did we lose focus for a few more?
I did.
Thank you, Dad.
This is the end of twenty and sixty thousand.
Wonderful.
At the end, at the rodeo.
Good.
But who wants to have ten days of pressure, right?
Which event?
Oh, the team roping. They came in third in the average.
Good.
But nothing like having ten days of major pressure and then...
Pressure, isn't that fun?
No, not...no, it's terrible.
It's a sport, right? It's fun.
I don't know.
All right, we are back.
Who pays the gas money?
We're back, and so we just went over TRT assumptions and moving into the courthouse funding. So as we've talked about a bit, the construction cost estimate is forty-four point five million for the courthouse. The county would issue full faith and credit bonds for forty-four point five million, assuming a true interest cost of five point zero seven five percent.
It is point zero seven five, not the seven five that you said, right? Okay, I was like, okay. I was like, how did I get that one wrong? Thank you. Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I thought that was really too high.
Still locked that one in fast.
That would be for twenty years for an annual debt service of three point six million and a total debt service of around seventy-two million right now. And so as Commissioner Day briefly spoke about, the ARPA, we did receive local assistance and travel consistency funds, which have broad latitude and scope. We're proposing that we use four point six million of that to pay down the debt, or at least to use for the debt, and one point five million dollars from the state of Oregon, the OJD funds could be utilized to buy down the debt as well. Our annual debt service, which would be funded by the increase in the general fund property tax rate of six cents, which we went over, unallocated room tax revenue, and monitoring our growth rate.
Okay, I'll finally get to the butt.
Yeah.
So you use estimate. Is that an estimate or is that a budget? I mean, the way you're talking about it, it's a budget because that's what you're gonna fund.
For which number?
For the forty-four point five million.
It was the amount the board of commissioners approved. Those were the project costs.
So that's the budget.
Sunwest gave us much more detailed projections.
So, and this gets to a philosophical thing, and you know, just to put the cards on the table. Using TRT as a capex model works for me, and in fact, I think it's really good, as long as the rigor is put on the projects that the TRT is supporting. And that's the, you know, I said it earlier, you know, my concern is that TRT ends up kind of being the overage or the slush that says, well, okay, shoot, we're a million off this way, we're a million off this way, the TRT will go solve our problems. I think it's really good to intentionally use TRT to say, I can do this project. Coming up a couple of years, I have more growth in TRT than I was expecting, because I think we will, at least based on your projections. And, you know, we can use TRT to go do this, but I think we just need to be very, very intentional and very, very focused in terms of saying, we can allocate TRT, and more to the point, we can allocate this much TRT to it. So what I'd really like to see is, over the lifetime of the courthouse funding, this is how much over how many years that we would want to or we would be willing to assign TRT to support that in addition to other funding. And I'm just using that because, I mean, you've used that for a model for at least one other that we've discussed, which would be the Center of Republic Safety Building, where they ask was, this much, we'll figure out how to fund the rest. I'm not saying that's a perfect model, but I'm saying it's a useful model so that you know where you're allocating your dollars and where overages can otherwise be spent on other opportunity. So let me hop off the soapbox on that. But that's the real encouragement, and that's the lens that I'm going to be looking at from a budget committee standpoint, when you're actually coming to say, I want to allocate TRT to go do acts.
And we do have those numbers in the model. I'd have to check, but we do have modeled out how much TRT would be over the life of the twenty years, as we've discussed, if there wasn't an infusion of large capex funds.
Yeah. We, as a budget committee, have so little time in front of this versus, you know, the three county commissioners that I have great faith in and the county staff that I have equally great faith in. I really expect that it's going to come out that says, okay, here's how we're doing the spending, and here's how we think it can be allocated and delivered. That makes it really easy for us to approve. If you, again, if we start to get into some of these in a vacuum, can the budget committee make this decision? That's where I personally get a little uncomfortable and, you know, with appropriate use of the taxpayer money, and I started to get doubtful as to whether that's a good idea.
Makes sense.
We should probably be applying equal rigor to just about any dollar that we expend.
I think so.
So...
So what are you asking more for?
Moving on to other future capital needs, which are not...
But I have a basic question here. If we have this four point six and the one point five, so we're really, if we are talking about forty-four point five million, we're really talking about like financing thirty-eight million, perhaps?
Well, perhaps even closer.
Even less?
Yeah, perhaps thirty-five million. I think we could probably do ten. Based on what we were looking at earlier, when I think Robert and admin staff gave the presentation to you, on the buydown from forty million to thirty million, I think we could probably do ten million if you take into account the LITCF funds, the OJD funds, and what's in our reserve currently.
Okay, because that's what I was thinking. We're going to really be able to get it down.
And that's part of the discussion on how much can we buy down the debt upfront. Right now, the assumptions are that we have debt service, so, you know, the approximate value per year that we have to make in debt service payments. But it would be advantageous to buy down the debt from sources we have, including any potential state resources. So then, once we know for sure those certainties, then we would plunk that in the model and in the budget, once we know it and have it, and then we could see how that affects the outcome of the other areas. Great point.
So this is that one sidebar. This is the high end. This is the best numbers we know right now from the builder. This is the big package, and then we just, the goal is to buy it down as much as possible in the near future.
And it's really hard, because, you know, change orders are change orders and uncertainties. And again, I'm painfully experiencing this in another context right now. But when, it's, again, I come back to the intentionality of saying, it's going to cost this, and if it costs more than this, we have to figure out how we're going to save or how we're going to raise other capital to go do it. Just to get to the point of the, you know, you've established what burden you're willing to accept, and then you hold that line.
And what, just, yeah, if you hadn't seen, I mean, just last week, we made the commitment to put another floor on top of there, which is going to be an unfinished floor. But the elevator will go there, the utilities will go there, it'll be ready for a courthouse build-out, courtroom build-out. So, you know, that was four and a half million of it. So everybody, we all concluded, this seems to be the right commitment right now. It'll be an interior controlled space with the DA, all the courts and all the court services. Having that flex space inside the building is very valuable. But that was another commitment we made, adding four and a half million to it.
You probably saved five by doing that.
Oh, yeah. They said, yeah, if we don't build it now, you'd never take a roof off and put another floor on a building. You'd have to do it now or never.
Not with the way trust engineering approvals go in this county now.
Oh.
They specifically said to go back and put the fourth floor on later would cost twice as much.
Easily. And again, I'm stepping outside of the context of the budget committee. I am very happy with how responsible the county is being with the dollars on this. The number is a daunting number, but I realize that you're trying to future-proof this without having to go put a future burden on the taxpayers. And, you know, and I thank you for that. You know, I know we're past public input, but I thank you for that. But let's just make sure that we're being equally responsible in terms of the way that we're providing the funds, as we are in terms of allocating them in the first place.
Well, and this is a twenty-year, something-year cycle, as in, the building that we're in now was the last time the county just had to build some buildings, be bigger, have more space. And then it was a quiet period, a recession, and a grown-up, a run-up, and now it's a big capital need, so it's a point in time.
All right, so speaking of that, it is a point in time, and other future county capital needs.
We're going to sunset if we're not careful.
No, no. I was just talking about the twenty-year cycle there. County operations continue to grow, and future capital projects may be necessary. They are not in the model currently, but preliminary new capital conversations include expansion of the clerk's office, the public safety campus, which we've heard about a little bit today, the district attorney's office, and health services. So those are very preliminary conversations, but just want to put it out there because we want everybody aware of them as they come up. If financially viable, capital projects will be funded through unallocated TRT or any other source that we can find.
Dan, I brought up the health services, that North County project, twenty-three thousand square feet or something. What's Courtney, thirty-seven thousand or whatever? I mean, we've got that building that hasn't been, those two pieces of property that have not been implemented, so why are we, I mean, we're talking about doing more building?
And I can't speak to...
I mean, and also, aren't we on the ground for the Lapine Community Health Center there? Have we signed a dotted line there?
I'll let Eric speak to the Lapine Community Health Services. As for health services in general, I think that would be a great conversation topic for their pre-budget meeting, along with any other questions that we have.
Part of it's looking at the Williamson lease, and that expires, and so what to do there. There's also, the DCDC, the downtown clinic, is bulging. In fact, they expanded into the Mike Meyer buildings. But that's part of that downtown look of the whole campus.
The Lapine Community Health Clinic is more of the co-locating with the clinic and the benefits from that, rather than the, I mean, they're currently in the South County hub, but to co-locate with the Lapine Community Health Clinic, there's a good synergy there. So that's more driving that decision.
And we'll write that down as a question for the health services prior to Budget Week update to this board.
And one of the points with this slide is just to confirm that the proposed budget moving forward, it's not including funding for other major projects that are still being discussed, previewed, preliminary conversations about. That will include, there'll be other conversations on the side to help that. But the proposed budget does not include costs for any potential future projects.
Yeah, the proposed budget really circulates around the courthouse and capital maintenance needs. And so speaking of capital maintenance needs, which is Fund 070, they typically get three cents in property funding, or property taxes funding, which equates about nine hundred thousand dollars, and about five hundred thousand dollars right now in general fund transfer as well. And after speaking with Lee, you know, the capital maintenance, which are roofs and HVAC systems and things of that nature, will probably have another cycle of go-around, and they may need a larger infusion of general fund to cover kind of those critical capital maintenance needs here in the future.
Is it better off to do it in one large infusion, or is it better off to do an incremental increase?
Yeah, I guess we'd probably need to talk with the department about that. Capital maintenance needs, I think they have a way of, some of them are planned and some of them are unplanned, right?
Yeah.
So, but we could definitely speak with Lee on that. It's a great question. All right, moving forward. Health insurance rates. So as we spoke before, department rates were reduced in fiscal year twenty by five percent to balance revenue with claims, and really to start that planned decrease of the reserve. And we did hit that pretty quickly with the COVID-19 pent-up demand. Premiums no longer cover the costs, and department rates will increase eleven percent in fiscal year twenty-four, from one thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars per month to seventeen oh three eighty-five, and we're building that into the proposed budget. There's no change in employees' rates since 2016, but rates may possibly change mid-year in fiscal twenty-four. We just need to keep analyzing that.
So that's a calculated number? So you're saying eleven percent?
Yep.
From our health benefits people, or?
Yeah, chart is, that's the charge to, I mean, yeah, part of it's from our health, our Davidson is our actuarial.
Actuary.
But it's also just our internal look at the forecast of where our reserve levels are, versus the reserve policy, and where our claims are heading.
And then the possible rate change mid-year is saying that that might not be enough?
The possible rate change mid-year is, so the premium is for the departments or the employer, and that last bullet point right there would be for the employee. We typically, if we charge ninety dollars an employee...
And that would be effective in January.
That is, okay.
That's just that cycle where EVAC goes through the recommendations.
And there was some talk about potentially increasing that.
Or having a tiered rate.
Or tiered.
Yeah, so that's that discussion, though.
Yeah.
Got it.
And so the reason for the eleven percent increase is, on this health benefits reserve forecast, we worked with HR and finance and obviously took into account their actuarial considerations as well. Eleven percent one-time is this graph on the left, so this would be the proposed budget with eleven percent, but without anything after that. And we use pretty conservative expenditure, expenditure numbers, but really, our premiums, even with the eleven percent increase, we just want to cover the cost. So what we're looking at, you know, just to give the committee an idea, as kind of a smoothing of the curve ongoing, would be the health benefits reserve fund at eleven percent in fiscal year twenty-four, plus a five point five percent ongoing for some time, four or five years, and then we could reexamine.
So it's eleven percent on this specific thing. What does that mean in terms of overall burden change per employee?
Well, so we have the employee charges of ninety dollars a month, so that's not changing as of yet.
Right, right. Yeah, no, I meant just from, because this all is coming out of personnel costs, would be...
Right, yeah, it's all charged.
So what's the change in the burden rate that you have to assume to go do that across the department?
Yeah, it was fifteen thirty-five per month to seventeen oh three. And what that aggregate number is, I'd have to look, but I think we did run the personnel model, and I do think it's going to be somewhere in the two million, something.
Yeah, I was going to guess it was like a four or five percent change.
Yeah.
In individual burden.
Mm-hmm.
That's tough.
Yeah, but we are reservable.
I mean, you don't have a choice.
Yeah, yeah. If we didn't raise it, our reserve would be, without this eleven percent increase, there's a good chance that reserve wouldn't be there in twenty-five. Because we're planning, we budgeted, and it looks like it's coming in that way to lose about three million in ending working capital in twenty-three. So, and if there's still continued lag, or if expenditures remain higher, which you can see we didn't estimate based on that graph, we would need to have, you know, these kind of one-time increases.
So there's finally some good news around your vacancy rates.
Well, vacancies, you know, departments don't pay a vacancy rate. Insurance, so, yeah. So, final slides here, proposed budget updates to the budget process. So Edco and COVA proposing that they present prior to Budget Week at a board meeting, but that they would be in attendance to answer questions here for Budget Week. Budget Committee sends, would send the questions in advance to COVA and/or Edco to address the budget meetings. And then we're also proposing no supplementary handouts during the budget meetings. We'd like to get you, if there are supplementary handouts, we'd like to get you them a week ahead of time when we do the budget, when we deliver you your budget books, so that you have all the information at that point in time. And then if necessary, departments would provide those in advance.
So just to make sure I got this right, so we, the budget committee would get a presentation from Edco and COVA ahead of time, using some mechanism. We would then have questions that we could ask during Budget Week that they would be present to answer? Is that, I just want to make sure I got the process right.
They'd be in attendance. I think the idea is that Edco and COVA would go the week prior to the budget, and, you know, obviously, that would be a public meeting where any budget committee member is willing, can attend, and then you guys would email finance any specific questions you have for Edco or COVA at the Budget Week, and they would be remotely or perhaps in-person attendance, just not going through the whole presentation there.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, of course. It's a long week, yeah.
Well, the good news, it's the week before the three-day weekend.
It is the week before.
If they gave their presentations and recorded them, then our appointed budget committee members could watch them at their leisure, whenever they felt like it, before Budget Week.
That's a good point, too. Right. Yeah, that's a good option as well. We'll have to consider that. Budget calendar. We have not attached the entire budget document, because it's in some ways an internal document, but we are proposing the week before Memorial Day, as Commissioner Day just pointed out, Monday through Thursday, with the last day, that Thursday being for deliberations of special requests and budget processes there. Health Services is tentatively scheduled to present Monday, May first, prior to Budget Week, but I do need to reach out and talk with Cheryl Smallman and Janice Garceau to get a time that for sure works for them. It might be a little bit earlier at the end of April, or potentially a little bit later in May. And then reaching out to the budget committee, obviously, and the Board of County Commissioners, obviously Bruce isn't here, but are there any preliminary schedule conflicts, any vacations during this time period, or? We look pretty good.
Just waiting to hear when this was going to land, so you can make other plans.
Yeah, great, great. And then we'll keep you updated on when the finalized date for the health services pre-budget presentation will be. And then does anybody have any other questions? Day?
Thank you for all the work you did today.
Yeah, thank you guys.
We appreciate the update.
Thank you.
So just from a wrap-up perspective, yeah, is there, are there any additional comments or additional guidance that the budget committee wants to give staff?
I don't feel like I have a good enough sense of how much, exactly how much TRT we're talking about on an annual basis to make the capital project work. You know, assuming, you know, if we assume the six cent assessed rate increase, how much TRT does it take to keep our capital reserve at a better place where we want it?
Yeah, I mean, in the next five years, you know, we're projecting that the general fund reserve will steadily decline from, the general fund transfer to the capital reserve will steadily decline from four point nine, you know, maybe four point six, four point three, three point, fairly linearly there with operating expenditures. And when that happens, every time that happens, the gap needs to be filled by another three or four hundred thousand of TRT every year. So, you know, just off the top, that's, if you're transferring five million in general fund, and you have capital maintenance and debt costs of six million, we obviously have five point five in reserve, too, that we would spend down. But that difference between the general fund transfer, and that's assuming the six cent increase there, that difference would need to be filled by TRT, which in the early years might be a million dollars. And as we trend farther out, if operational expenditures keep churning into general fund, which, you know, is a board and budget committee decision somewhere down the line, then TRT would potentially have to fill that entire gap as time goes on, based off, or whatever's left in the reserve, the gap minus the reserve.
We didn't have, in our packet today, we didn't have a little time series bar chart showing how much TRT it was going to take each year.
Right.
Did we?
No, no, we don't. And we can get that for you. That's, yeah, that's a little bit more advanced than the model, because it assumes two things. It assumes the property tax increase, so we can get that with the property tax increase. And the second thing it assumes is that our operational spending continues at the rate it has been for the last five years within the general fund. But we can give you that number. And just so everyone knows, like, as we said, at twelve point five million dollars of TRT, we'd only be able at max to put in one point four, one point five million, because we do have concurrently in fiscal year twenty-four and fiscal year twenty-five, those two million dollar payments to Sun River, and then it would kind of open up a little bit from there.
Yeah, that'd be, if you could run a...
Yeah.
Run a...
We could put our assumptions in there.
That would be really interesting to see.
What might be worth it, and I honestly haven't thought much about it, to see whether it would make sense, would be, do you have a, because typically, as a budget committee, we're voting on an annual budget, but is there some guidance that we can give in terms of, here's a ten-year projected TRT run that, you know, that the budget committee would nod its head at, that would say, at a minimum, this much TRT would be allocated for capital reserve or for any project, as you want to go? Because then you can decide, then we can decide where extra TRT is best allocated. But if you really said, I mean, if you set it at a million at a five percent CAGR, or even better, you know, a million at a ten percent CAGR, knowing that you're going to have to increase that over time anyway, and just basically set that as a guideline, now you're setting yourself a longer-term piece and then determining, okay, am I using TRT to actually generate more TRT, like we do with Visit Central, Oregon, or am I, you know, how otherwise am I using it? But again, be intentional. If you think that you're going to want a, if you think that that's the best solution to go be able to do this, and I'm not arguing that it very likely is, especially from a capex standpoint, be focused on what it's really going to take, because that's going to start to squeeze everything else. It's very easy, then, to go to a sheriff's office or go to somebody else that's asking for TRT for some other pet project, to basically say, sorry, we ain't got it, you know, we have our five-pound sack, and you're asking for another ten pounds of shutter.
Well, and part of it is, it is part of pre-planning, too, where, you know, you can say, okay, we have six million dollars in debt and capital needs, so if we have five million in general fund transfer, then we only need a million in TRT. But as that general fund transfer lowers every year, if we don't have a reserve, meaning we've inputted more TRT over the top, there's no way, unless, like we talked about earlier, we had really exaggerated TRT assumptions, that we would ever be able to cover six million dollars unallocated TRT to cover those capital maintenance and...
Not without saying no to an awful lot of things you already say yes to.
Including, yeah, because we already send out unallocated to departments and things of that nature. So correct, right? So it really is partly building that reserve now, so you would have a reserve, and then when the general fund excess, if it fails, or if it stops going in, then you would spend down both the excess that's in the reserve, plus whatever TRT can go in.
Well, and, you know, I still look at this in terms of, maybe it's a, the pendulum was swinging. At one point or another, it was, oh, we had enough in this fund that we could actually fund some of these projects. Now it looks like we're getting squeezed, especially, you know, and the courthouse was a big swing, but that swing happened. Now, all of a sudden, we're being squeezed, and we have to go recover from that. It doesn't hurt to overcompensate on that, so that you don't have as big of a yaw the next time.
Yeah.
And you say that it's there, because you've already said, there are going to be other building projects that are going to come up, and I wholeheartedly agree with that. It's better to prepare for some of those, you know, like you said, in the case of the landfill or something, there's other funds that go into it. If the other funds in this case involve TRT, then admit it and tell a lot of other people no.
Yep.
Actually, I had a schedule. Are there any other comments or discussion that we want to have today?
Well, it's going to be interesting. Will we hit the fourteen million for TRT? It's almost fourteen million projected for this year, as the last financial, so will we hit that? I mean, we'll know through Christmas, won't we?
We could all take a staycation and help.
Well, yes, we're all going to stay here, and they actually said bookings through Christmas looked good. Isn't that what we heard at the meeting the other day?
That's what I've heard.
We don't want to underestimate the impact of snow.
Yes, I was going to say, let's all, you know, as...
We have it right now.
...for snow.
Yeah, I mean, you know, last year was a meh, snow year, and this is pretty good so far. I would expect that to translate to decent TRT in the winter months, but...
And a ski year can evolve into a snowmobile year. We haven't seen big snowmobile years recently, but if that happens, that's another whole level, too. People start coming around from northwest for Newbury and all that kind of fun stuff.
Oh, and Bottega is flying from Redmond to Redmond, so that's the good news, in case you need to sit back and forth.
There you go.
But I couldn't figure out the price. It wouldn't let me, unless I booked the seat, it wouldn't tell me. I don't think it's very cheap, but at least it's there.
All right. Well, we have some action items to get back to the budget committee, and we'll work on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.